Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. My name is David Atkins and I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. If we want to start this off with a roll call vote of the board members, and just to confirm that everybody's connected and audio and everything. So I'll go down the list. Mr. Pfaff?
Here.
Mr. Delay?
Here.
And Ms. Conant will wait and see. Mr. Gotti?
I'm here.
All right. So we'll read our introduction here. All members, all meetings of the Planning Board are recorded by Westwood Media Center and are broadcast live on local cable television, Comcast Channel 12, and Verizon Channel 42. Our meetings are also available on the Westwood Media Center YouTube channel and are live streamed. If you're having any trouble logging into Zoom, please go to zoom.us and click on "Join Meeting" and enter the meeting ID 864-1698-1348. This is displayed on the screen if you're watching this live, and it's also on the town's homepage on the meeting calendar. And in general, the easiest way to find, to get connected to this meeting, go to the town website, search for Westwood, Town of Westwood website, and you'll find that on Google. And then on the calendar, you click on Planning Board Meeting, and you should see a list of all the instructions there, including a hyperlink to zoom.us, which will get you into this meeting. We won't be, your picture won't be on the screen, but we will be able to hear you if we unmute you. If you call into the phone number there, that will also allow you to be on the audio part of the meeting, and you can raise your hand on that phone call by pressing star nine, and then that's our co-hosts here, our town planner, or the person from Westwood Media Center will be able to let me know, or we'll be able to let you speak. So that's, that's how that works. So while people are unmuted, please turn off your cellphone ringers to eliminate background noise, so that we don't, and I discovered today, the back, there's a lot of background noise, you may not hear it, definitely cellphone, you will hear it, and it's very disruptive. We'll begin the meeting with only the board members and the professional staff unmuted and on the video. And as the chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they're not speaking in order to minimize background noise. So before we begin, I'll outline our process. A planning board meeting usually consists of three types of agenda items. One, we consider applications that have been submitted to the board, and we conduct public hearings where a public comment portion is required. Two, we have other applications and discussions that are not a formal public hearing, and the public will have an opportunity to comment at the board's discretion. And third, we have review administrative items where board members will discuss issues, deal with items like approval of meeting minutes, planning future agendas, and hearing updates from staff and other boards. Prior to each agenda item, the chair will announce the item and provide some descriptive context. For applications, the chair will invite the applicant to address the board and give a short presentation summarizing what they're requesting. Board members have already received the application materials prior to the meeting, so we have all those documents in advance that we've read right before this meeting, and we will have reviewed them. Board members may ask clarifying questions during and following the presentation. Then professional staff, outside experts, may present their research assessments and comments to the board. If the issue includes a public hearing, the board will then proceed to the public comment portion of the public hearing. In this remote meeting format, residents and guests may participate in several ways. Attendees will be unmuted and recognized to speak over the Zoom meeting application or from a telephone dial-up. We'll also be, we will be able to hear you but not see you. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to this part of, for participation in the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Following a public comment portion, the board will continue to deliberate and make a decision or continue a hearing to a future date. All of our remote meetings now require that the votes be done by roll call, so I'll proceed down the line, list of members, and get individual yes or no votes. When a motion and seconds are made, the chair will ask if there's any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote, and then we'll restate the results of the vote. It's the practice of the Planning Board to keep public hearings open until the decision is made in order to allow consideration of additional material that may be requested during the deliberation process, and to allow for additional public comment as new issues arise. Were we able, was Ms. Conant able to join us? Just checking to see. Okay.
I'm here.
Oh, great. So Ms. Conant is present. Thank you. So now, moving on to the agenda. Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes. One change for tonight, you have on your agenda, item number four, that's the Open Space and Recreation Plan. That has been a continued public hearing that was approved by you and conditionally approved by the state in 2019. And then earlier this summer in July, you had submitted final updates requested by the state, back to the state after your July meeting, and that's pending a final review by the state. So at that time, you, in July, you continued the public hearing to tonight's meeting, hoping that you'd have comments from the state by this time. We don't have those comments yet, but, so I recommend continuing the public hearing for the final review of the Open Space Recreation Plan to your meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 7th, sorry, October 27th, at 7:00 PM. That would be a Zoom meeting. There, the reason is because we're still waiting for that review from the state. I don't know how long that'll take. It could take a little bit. Since that time, I noticed an error in the plan. I did correct that and got that back to the state. So I expect at some point, they'll submit a final review and comment letter back to you on that final plan.
Abby, what was, what was the correction that you made?
We, in the plan, it listed some properties that were protected. In the Shuttleworth property, which is the property owned by the town that's behind the Hanlon School, that was shown to be protected by an Article 97, which is the state parkland, protected land, and we realized that was incorrectly listed, so we updated the plan to show that it's not, it is open space, it's owned by the town, but it's not officially an Article 97 land.
Is there any objection or discussion to continuing this?
No.
Okay. Going to have a motion to continue the hearing then?
What date, Abby?
Tuesday, October 27th, a remote meeting from Zoom, by Zoom, and then the Zoom information, the final Zoom ID will be posted a week prior.
So we're giving it another month?
Yeah, I don't, your next meeting's only two weeks away, so I doubt, if we don't have it now, it's unlikely we'd have it in, in the next two weeks.
All right, I'll make a motion that we continue the discussion about the Open Space Recreation Plan, so our meeting on Tuesday, October 27th, at 7:00 PM via Zoom.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Pfaff, seconded by Mr. Gotti, to continue this public hearing to October 27th at 7:00 PM. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, so we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Pfaff?
Aye.
Mr. Delay?
Aye.
Ms. Conant?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So that will be postponed to October 27th. So that leaves us with the rest of the agenda. We have a possibly busy agenda tonight, so let's move on to the, the first item is I'm just juggling screens here, so. The first item on our agenda is University Station Conformance Determination. There's a Five Below store planning to move into the other half of the old Sports Authority, and there's some changes to the facade that come to this board, because any, any changes to a, the outside of a building, trigger a environmental impact design review process, and that's a, in our bylaws, section 7.3, any kind of a change to the outsides of buildings, or any change in use of a property in town would trigger this environmental impact design review. So with that, I would ask if the applicant is here and ready to present.
The applicant is.
All right, let's, if Abby, if you can bring him up, then we'll proceed.
Yep. Paul Sancata is here. Paul, is there anyone else here from your team that is here to speak, or just you?
Just me to speak. I think there, there are one or two people from my office that may be just listening in.
Okay.
So, we good to start?
Yes.
Great. Board members, good evening. Paul Sancata with New England Development. It's good to see you guys. It's been, it's been a little bit of a while. This evening, what we have before the board is a, is a filing to determine whether or not the facade improvements that we want to make on a building are consistent with, with the architectural style for the balance of the center. So the space that we're talking about this evening is between the HomeSense store and the PetSmart store. Some of you may recall that the HomeSense store is in what used to be the Sports Authority building, and when HomeSense occupied the, the Sports Authority building, they, they occupied about two-thirds of the original Sports Authority space. So about a third of it has been vacant for some time, and we're proposing a Five Below store in that, in that third that has been vacant. And the facade of that particular part of the store today is, is a brick facade. It has a couple of windows in, into it, and, in an emergency egress door. And so the proposal before you is to create a storefront to accommodate this new tenant. And Abby, I don't know if you have the ability to call up that photograph, it would give the board members a, an idea of what the condition is today, and then, and then we could just pull up the proposed elevation. If that's possible.
Okay, I'm working on it. Hold on.
Then, then I'll, I'll introduce a little bit more of the, of the, the design approach for this, for the new facade. So we are using multiple materials that already exist in the, in the center. So the, to orient folks, we're looking, we're up over University Ave, looking from roughly over Not Your Average Joes in the direction of the Lifetime Fitness. And so you can, you can make out, maybe Abby, you could point to the HomeSense store, it's that, the green square logo, and then to the right of that would be the, the new Five Below space. And then I don't know if it's easy to get the, the existing conditions photo. You know that was a separate.
I, I do have it in here. Hold on. There it is.
So there we go. You, you see the HomeSense sign in the left of the image, and, and just a little piece of the PetSmart, off to the right of the image, and, and that brick facade is where the Five Below will, storefront will go. One thing to point out, it's a feature that gets picked up in the new Five Below facade. There's a pilaster on the left-hand edge of, of this new Five Below space. It's, it's to the left of the window that has the, the leasing sign in it, and that pilaster is sort of a good landmark. It has a, a stone base, and then it has the white stucco treatment above it. So Abby, if we go to, back to the proposed facade improvements, the, the pilaster that exists today is, is where the cursor sits today, I'm sorry, where the cursor sits right now. It's a, it's a masonry base with, with the, the stucco treatment and a cornice at the top of it. That element gets repeated on the right-hand side of the store. There are walls, there are lighting wall sconces that are used throughout the center that are also used on either side of, of the pilaster. There's obviously a, a new glass storefront system that gets cut into the brick facade, and then over the, the storefront glazing system, there's an awning that protrudes off of the face of the building. And then above the awning is a stucco treatment with, with a sign band that contains the sign for the Five Below store, and then to cap it off is another cornice that matches the cornice details used in the adjacent spaces. We received peer review comments from Mike Sinessi just bef, yesterday or this morning. And, and as, as has been the case throughout the project with Mike Sinessi, he always brings some real helpful design recommendations that really enhance the design. Those recommendations, I imagine, are in front of the board, and we, we can go through some of the details, but we've agreed to incorporate all of the recommendations that Mike has, has made. Maybe the more notable, he, he does point out that the stone and the brick and, and the lighting elements should match those that are already in existence on the facade. And, and so that's certainly the intent, to make sure that both dimensionally and material-wise, all of those elements, elements match. Another recommendation that he made is that the, the awning is a metal that's painted a bronze color. And he had, he had suggested that the storefront metal framing that frames all of the, the glass should match that, and, and so rather than the clear anodized, which is an aluminum kind of a, of a, of a look on the trim that goes around all of the glazing, it will match, it'll be the bronze color which will match the awning. He had suggested some scoring lines in the, in the stucco above the awning to add some interest to that panel of stucco above the awning, and he also suggested that that blue backdrop to the Five Below sign, which is also a stucco material, be set proud of, of the beige field, so that it adds some prominence to the sign element.
Oh.
I think all those comments make a lot of sense, and they enhance the design, so we'll, we're happy to incorporate those into the design.
Paul, could I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I have to apologize. I misstated the, the purpose of this. I just realized that I was thinking of another item. This is a conformance review, so we are reviewing these to compare to the master development plan for University Station. And I talked about it in EIDR. I just want everyone to be clear, this is not an EIDR. I totally missed that. I totally misstated that. I was trying to set it up for one of the other discussion items here. But this is a conformance review for the master development plan for University Station. So again, I apologize if I confused people with that.
Thank you. So that, I think that really sort of sums up the, the presentation. Happy to take any questions. We, the, clearly, the design intent was to make it consistent with many of the elements that are, already exist in the center, and I think that the design recommendations that Mike made really enhance it, and, and, and sort of give it a little bit more pop in, in, in certain aspects of it. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Did we have any comments, Abby, from staff, or?
No, I don't have any of the comments, other than we had your peer reviewer, Mike Sinessi of DSK Design, that provided the suggested changes earlier today that was uploaded to your packet and provided to the applicant.
Are there any, any board members with questions or comments?
I had, I think, just one. I noticed on the proposed frontage, there was a sign just to the right that kind of protrudes off the building. Can you remind, do we have that in other locales at University Station? I just can't remember.
Yeah, we do, Chris. There was a, there was a blade sign that was part of the sign, signage package, and so most, if not all, of the, the tenants use the same, the same sort of branded blade sign. It's, you know, the bracket is, the bracket is uniform throughout, and the sign panel size itself is as well, so.
And you said the sconce lights were to match what is existing there now?
Existing meaning, I'm sorry, they're, they're not there now. They are the lights that have been used throughout the center.
Yeah, and I, I think I see one on PetSmart, right next to it. I see one there.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clear up. You, you said, what was there now? I didn't, didn't know exactly what you meant by that, but now I get it. No, that, that was the only thing I had.
Any other, any questions or comments, Mr. Delay, Ms. Conant?
Doesn't appear that there's any type of change to building height with the new cornice, right? It looks like it's same height as the existing.
The, the main cornice over the Five Below is it's, it's raised up about 18 inches. It matches, it would match the height. That's the easiest way to describe it. So it is set at the height of the cornice that is the brick, the 100% brick pilaster that is on the left side of Five Below, which sort of terminates the HomeSense space.
Got it. Okay.
So it gives, it gives the entry some prominence, but no more prominence than, than that adjacent element.
I, I think it looks like it matches. It, it looks fine to me. It looks very good.
All right. Are there any, if there's anyone else, any members of the public who'd like to have any comments, you can press star nine on the phone, or raise your hand in the Zoom app, if they want, if you have any comments about this, the Five Below. Not seeing anything.
Paul, you mentioned that Mike had suggested something around the sign to give it some more architectural interest. Do we have any renderings of that? What he suggested?
It, it, it really, it, it wouldn't show up necessarily in a rendering like this. His suggestion was that the blue field behind the sign is a, is a similar stucco treatment, and rather than have the blue stucco flush with the beige stucco, the blue, the suggestion was that the blue have some depth to it, so it would be, it would sit proud of, or forward of the beige one.
Right. I, I get that. I thought you had mentioned that the beige part was suggesting some details.
I'm sorry, yeah. In the beige part, what, what Mike had proposed is two vertical score lines, one on either side of the Five Below sign, that, that traveled the full height of the beige stucco treatment.
Are they beige as well?
Yes. So it's, so it's a score line that just creates a shadow line.
They're just vertical, no horizontals?
Correct.
Okay.
Abby, do you have a?
Yep, I just have another question for Paul. We have noticed some of the dumpsters around University Station at a couple different locations. They're, they're enclosures. The gates have not been closed. I know we've reached out in the past. There's one at Japole and the hotel. Are those, do you have an update on, they're supposed to be in the enclosures, and then with the gate closed at all times?
So I know we, we had some trouble, and I think we've talked over the, over the months, Abby, with getting a gate, at least one gate within the shopping center portion of the development replaced. Some of that material stuff really got backed up with, with COVID, and I apologize. I don't know if, I, I want to say that that gate finally did arrive and it's been installed, but I, but I couldn't say with 100% certainty. In terms of keeping, making sure the gates get closed all the time, it's, it's sort of just continually staying on our tenants to, to enforce that, and so I can pass that on to Tom to, to just reinforce that with our tenants. With regards to the hotel gate, you, you probably have seen that they lost, one, one of the gates broke and fell off, and we've been pushing pretty hard on the hotel to get a repair crew out there to reinstall that gate. And we, we will continue to pester them. We can turn it up, but, but we understand it's, it's just been something that needs constant sort of attention.
Abby, while we have Paul here, I was just going to ask, how has it been working with Anthony's and the outdoor temporary fencing that we approved back when the project opened? It comes up in the spring and goes down in the fall for snow removal and things like that. Is that working out all right? Have you had any complaints or problems?
I haven't, I'm not aware of any complaints. I'm not necessarily on the front lines of that, Chris, to, to get the complaints, but, you know, usually they do, you know, I will eventually hear of them, so it's been quiet, so I think that's probably a good sign.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, I think the thing would, would be to approve the change, if, to approve these designs. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the design change to the facade for the Five Below taking over the, the one-third remaining that used to be Sports Authority.
I just suggest that you add the condition that the plans be revised to incorporate your peer reviews comments.
So I will make the motion to approve the Five Below plan with the condition of the inclusion of the peer review suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Gotti. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second for Mr. Pfaff. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote to approve the proposed facade and entry changes with the condition that was stated. Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Aye.
Ms. Conant?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes as well. So that's approved. Thank you, Mr. Sancata.
Thank you, guys. Good to see you all. Take care.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. So we'll be moving on to the next item on the agenda. And just to clarify, there's there are three main items on, there were three main items on the agenda tonight. There's the University Station, the Five Below that we just talked about. We're next going to consider 472, 480 Summer Street, the shared driveway modification request. And then the last item tonight on the agenda is 166 East Street, which is the Golf Club, the Norfolk Golf Club. So those are, that's what's on the meeting tonight, and we had continued the open space and rec hearing item to the October 27th meeting. So the next item is 472 to 480 Summer Street, the shared driveway modification request. We are continuing, we continued this from our last meeting. We had some technical difficulties and we weren't really able to get everybody engaged. This is not a public hearing, but there will be public comment on this tonight. We will have, as we've had all along on this long-running special permit. So we'll begin with the applicant and they can introduce, Abby, unless you want to add something from the staff.
We could hear from the applicants first if you if you want. I know we have or I could just provide a brief update from.
First of all, let me just make sure, is everybody here that we need for this meeting tonight that wants to be here? We have the.
Right, I think so. We have Mr. and Mrs. Mahana here with their attorney, Walter Jacobs, and then Brian Anderson and his attorney, Rosemary Trainee.
Great. And so do you, did you want to, does it make sense to start off with with you? And see, Nora is also here. I don't know if she would want to talk about the agreement or something or whatever. Just why don't you take it from here and then we'll get the input from the applicant, the property owners, and then we'll move on to public input.
Okay, all right. To summarize, so this was a shared driveway special permit that was approved by the planning board in 2017, 2017. It called for the creation of, there's the existing house at 480 Summer Street, that is the Mahana's house. And then they created two additional lots that would all be shared by this shared driveway. The first house has recently been constructed, and that's the one, it's in the back, it's off of Summer Street. 472 is the new address, and that's Mr. Anderson's house. And I went out there in in August to do a final inspection, which the typical procedure after a planning board approves a project, it goes through the permitting process and gets a building permits. And then prior to an occupancy permit being issued by the building department, any review staff from other departments review and sign off on the application. And I had gone out in August and found that not all requirements of the planning board's 2017 approval have been completed. So since that time, I've been working with the original applicant of the special permit and homeowner at the 480 Summer Street, as well as the new owner, the Andersons, trying to work with them on completing all these items. So Mr. Anderson was looking to move into his new house, so we have been working with them and on a draft agreement that would allow for, if if comes to fruition, if both parties agree and finalize the agreement, would call for putting up funds for the remaining work. We have a cost estimate that we prepared by our town engineering service provided that for you detailing all the outstanding items. And then calls for a timeline to complete them, and then also allows putting up the funds, you know, upfront, so that work will be completed. And then with this agreement, if the funds are provided and the agreement is finalized, the town could issue a temporary occupancy permit. And also, the owners would work on completing the outstanding items. And some of those items included installation of the fire hydrant, completing the grass pavers along the shared driveways, which was to widen the driveway. There's also a speed bump. Also, we had asked, or we are requiring a final as-built plan, especially to show the location of some new items that we discovered on the field change, which would be a basketball court, some grading changes, and also a pool. So we've asked for an updated drainage plan because we think with those recent changes, there has been, the property has been experiencing flooding, water flowing off onto the Westfield Street abutting property. So we did hear from those neighbors, and they are here tonight. So the agreement calls for the requirement of submission of updated drainage plans for our stormwater review. So we'd like to have that completed, as well as the as-built plan that shows the property boundaries and the the landscape area. The 2017 approval also had a a protected area where the existing trees could not be cut. That was 20 feet on the side and 50 feet in the rear. So we asked for that to be clearly shown on on the plan. So we did also notice that the driveway serving the house 472, where it connects to the shared driveway, was not constructed as per the approved plan from 2017. And we did hear from the Mahanas, the original special permit applicant at your last meeting, that they would like to see that reverted back to the driveway to connect where it was originally approved for, which is prior to the circular turnaround. And the idea of that original approval was to keep cars from going down the circular turnaround and keeping them from going out the rear easement. So the idea was for them to go directly to the new house. So that, so we have updated agreement since your last meeting to call, to include restoring the driveway, removing the driveway the way it is now and putting it back to where it was approved for in the 2017 plan.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Abby. Why don't we go to the original applicant, the Mahanas or their attorney, whoever wants to speak on their behalf?
Yes, good evening. This is Attorney Jacobs. The Mahanas, I believe, have placed some money in escrow for the fire hydrant, which will be installed through the town or the water district. I'm not sure, Abby perhaps could clarify whether the speed bump has been completed. I believe it was put in. There may have been some question whether it's been fixed to the pavement or not. I'm not sure whether that has been completed or not. But I believe all the things that Mr. Mahana is required to do have been completed, other than perhaps for those two issues. He definitely wants the driveway to be coming off of the shared driveway prior to the turnaround, as the original plan shows. And we're not requesting any modification of the original plan and original permit. We want to keep it the way it is. The issue then for the planning board, as far as temporary occupancy, as long as that driveway is going to be constructed, whether it's able to be completed this fall or not, I think there was some question by the Andersons, whether they would be able to get the architectural designs and all the site work completed before winter. I think they were requesting some extra time to April. But we would be asking that the planning board, if they do issue a temporary occupancy, that they condition that on the reconstruction of the driveway as it was depicted in the original special permit. And then, as far as the agreement, we're not opposed to anything that we have yet to complete, that we would agree to see to it that that's done. But I believe we've placed the money in escrow for the fire hydrant, so that's now out of our hands, and that remains for the town or the water district to be able to schedule that work to be done. The only other possibility might be the speed bump. If that has not been totally completed, we would see to it that that's completed. Other than that, I'm not sure there's anything that the Mahanas need to agree to, because I think most of it's been done. But I would leave for Abby to clarify if there's anything else that we do need to agree to. We certainly will cooperate with the town in any way that we can to make sure everything in the conditions for the special permit are complied with on our end. And then I think the, basically, the remainder of the agreement would be between the town and the Andersons.
All right, Abby.
Can I just respond to that, too? I forgot to add. I did go out there earlier today. The speed bump, there was a small one out there. But I don't think that satisfies the condition of the planning board's approval for a speed bump. It was very small, maybe only two inches. So I do have some samples or examples of what speed bump, a little bit larger one, that we've seen throughout town and other locations. I think it would have to be at least, you know, half of, half a foot, a little bit more substantial, so we can review that, or I can review that with with you after the meeting. I know the the gate at the top of the easement where the turnaround is, like, that gate has been installed. That has been done.
And and we're not, we're not in opposition at all to work with Abby to see to it that the speed bump is done and installed, compliant with what the town wants.
All right, thanks, Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Anderson or the Andersons or their attorney, would you like to?
Yep, this is Brian Anderson. How's everybody doing? I'll speak to to my part. So we were we were unaware that the entrance to the driveway, which is, I think, some of the issue tonight, was going to be an issue for the Mahanas, but that has been brought to our attention, that per the original approved plan, they would like to see the entrance moved further back off of the the circular, which, you know, if that's going to, you know, if that's what they want, that's what we'll do. That's where it was supposed to be. The rest of the items on the list for the approved plan that the Mahanas had gotten back in 2015 or 17, the gate and some other miscellaneous items, signs that I think were installed already. And the fire hydrant, I think, is being being addressed, as their attorney just described. The the barrier gate has been has been done. Trying to think what else, if there's anything else. I think the main issue is the the movement of the entrance of the driveway back to the original plan's approval, which we're, which we're happy to do. Our only concern would be to do it you know, by December 1, which I think was the original agreement that we had discussed or that Abby had drafted up. That might be somewhat difficult to do. It's not maybe impossible to do, but but we're asking the board to give us some leeway, and the Mahanas to give us some leeway to have our architect come out, redesign the entrance to the driveway, and then, you know, construct it to to, you know, comply with the original approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions from board members, or is it clear what's being requested here to everyone? And we'll get to public comment after.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You know, I should have probably mentioned, too. I mean, I think that the the main purpose of this, or at least the way I understood it, was the main purpose of this was to issue us a temporary certificate of occupancy. We, because of the unfinished items on the the board's original approval back from 2017, we have not been able to receive a certificate of occupancy as as of now. We have all of our building, plumbing, electrical, fire department, everybody has signed off, but the planning board obviously needs needs their consent to issue a certificate of occupancy, which is what we've been working with Abby on for the last few weeks, just to come up with some type of an agreement. I think the Mahana's attorney has described that they were going to put some money in for the hydrant, and we've agreed on our side to put money in escrow as well for the items that have yet to be completed, so that they, which I think the Beta Group came out and described and put in writing. So we're happy to put that money in escrow, complete those items. What we're hoping for is a certificate, a temporary certificate of occupancy until those items are completed, with the one item on the side being the entrance of the driveway. So we had agreed, in theory at least, with Abby and with the, at least the proposed agreement, to have those items done by December 1st. With the money in escrow, the only item would be the entrance to the driveway, which we're asking for potentially longer, so that we can have it designed correctly and done correctly.
Can I just ask one more question? I'm sorry if I missed this, Brian. Also, the, we've asked for a stormwater review, so the updated drainage plan that also needs to be reviewed by the conservation agent?
Yes, Karen. Yep, we're aware of that.
All right, are there any board member questions? And if there, if people.
David, it seemed like there was some question as to whether or not there was agreement on the movement of the driveways, but it seems like the Andersons are willing to do what needs to be done to satisfy the Mahanas, correct?
That's correct. We're trying to, trying to be good neighbors, so if they want, they want to move, then we will, we will take the expense to move it.
And just as, as a, to complete what I had said earlier, we support the plant, town planners' request to outline the property lines, because I believe in the process of some of the construction, some or all of the stakes may have accidentally been knocked down. She was talking about, I think, making sure the property lines are delineated, so they can determine whether or not the protected areas are properly preserved. We would support that only from the standpoint, also, of making sure there's adequate setback from the basketball court area. And that would able to be, certainly would be clear, once the the request that the town planner has made for the delineation of the property boundaries, then it would be clear whether those setbacks exist or not.
Mr. Pfaff, you're muted.
Is there a stormwater plan created to fix what is happening currently?
Oh, there was an initial plan, created a stormwater plan with several cul-de-sacs and things like that to deal with stormwater off of, off of the home. And my engineer, so since the request from some of the neighbors that they were getting some additional water coming off of the lot, we had the engineer come out. He's actually been out twice now to come up with a mitigation plan for any additional water that's coming off of, if you're looking at the right side of the house, which flows down the easement down to Westfield Street. So yes, there's a, there's mitigation plans that are being developed to see what we can do to make sure that that that's not occurring.
And Abby, do we have somebody who will be reviewing on the town's behalf before they start enacting that plan to make sure that the math works and?
Yes, yes. So we we recommend, and what we have outlined in the agreement is for the project engineer to provide an updated drainage plan for review. That would be reviewed by the conservation agent, and if it triggers enough disturbance, then it would be the full conservation commission. So the conservation agent and conservation commission is the stormwater review authority. And then also, our our town engineer would take a look at it, and then I would make sure that that's completed as well. But we call for the updated stormwater plan to be submitted for review, then approved, then once approved, then installed, and then final inspection would be, I would go out and also the conservation agent, Karen Katroni, would go out and inspect as well afterwards.
And this is one of the items that will be completed by December 1st?
Yes.
Any other, other questions? I saw in the participants, I saw that there was a question from someone. So if you would like to ask, if you would like to provide comments now, we'll have a public comment section. And if you could raise your hand, I would, first of all, I think Michael Walsh wanted to speak. But as you raise your hand, I'll recognize you, allow you to speak, and we'll go through that. And please keep your comments focused on this, on the project, and, you know, avoid. um, pretty keep your comments focused on this, on the project and, you know, avoid, I think I forgot to go through the we will all be respectful speech early on, but uh, that's uh how we do things. So Mr. Walsh, I will uh let, recognize you to comment. Did we unmute him? We're still not.
Looks like he has a question.
Dave, I think I've had my questions answered. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And uh, let's see, Miss, Mr. Gillis, I'm gonna. Abby, were you trying to say something?
No, boy, I'm just clicking.
Okay. All right, I'll let you, you do the clicking and I will just say, so Mr. Gillis, uh, please, and please like identify, please identify yourself as we typically do in your, your ad, your name and your address and.
Okay. Uh, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Michael Gillis. I'm here with my wife Julie and we reside uh bottom of the street on uh Westfield Street in front of the uh, the, the runway, uh, the water coming down. First of all, I want to thank the board for all the work in the project. I want to welcome the Andersons to the neighborhood. I'm sorry that this is the way our relationship starts and hopefully we get to meet each other. Having seen your daughters and wife around the pool for the last few weeks and your sons playing basketball on the court. I think they're about the same age as our kids and I hope they get to be good friends. Um, if you look back at the two thousand seventeen minutes, our, our um concern has always been safety. Uh, there were several safety things that as a result of those plans that were put in. The first thing that was put in was that the um, that the um circle was put in. That's been taken out. It's no longer a circle. It's now a diamond. Uh, that was put in by the fire department in order to assure that we would have uh circles that the fire trucks would get around. Uh, the way it is now, maybe it'll change uh with the new uh, the new driveway put, being put in, but that's something that the fire department, the chief requested and the building inspector requested. And I just want to make sure that they've had the opportunity to go up there and look at that to make sure that emergency vehicles can get around those. Uh, the other safety items was to the overburdening of the easement by the trucks. Um, all three years went by, all the construction was done. The third anniversary of this plan was in August. None of that was done. Over the last couple of weeks, it has been done. Um, as of this morning, the gate that was there previously was on the ground. Um, it was propped up today and it's sitting on a cinder block now. Uh, there is not a speed bump. Uh, I'm sure this work will be done, but the problem is this was supposed to be done before the trucks. And the reason that's important now is that it gives us grave um hesitation to believe that any of the things that is, we, this is being said will be done, will actually be done for the simple reason that they weren't done in the three years since this plan has been approved. Uh, in addition to that, um, the safety issues. Um, the second safety issue is the uh water draining down the street. This is not recent. It's been going on for two years. The town has known about it for more than a year. Town sent out emails to our neighbor, Ms. Corcoran, last May saying it would be addressed. Um, we were told that August fourth, when the inspection that was going to be addressed, we're told that the last meeting, two weeks ago, it's going to be addressed and it hasn't. Uh, this morning it was thirty six degrees when I went out there to walk my dog. Uh, it's the first day of fall. Within a couple of weeks, we're going to frost down there. Uh, somebody has built in the last three weeks a crushed stone swale along the driveway. What that does is it funnels all the water and the swell ends at exactly our property line at the gate. So all the water from both properties, four eighty, four seventy-two gathers. It then pours down our driveway and even though we haven't had rain for four weeks, we've had water every single day. And if this water continues to trickle down, it blocks about sixty to seventy-five feet of our driveway. It's a very thin layer of water, but the problem with that is within the next couple of weeks, it's going to be black ice. Uh, I don't see why uh we should have to put up with black ice in September or early October. And I don't see why, uh, given the fact that this issue has been uh percolating with the town and with the Abutters for two years now. Uh, we have to wait until December for it to be addressed. Uh, it's very unsafe. I walk up there every night with the dog. It's dark out, I can't see. And I'm not sure why we can put the houses that are up there, the pools, the, the pillars, uh, the basketball courts and not address this issue. Uh, so any delay until further into, there's no way that this, this should go beyond uh November first, because after that it, it's just too dangerous for, for ourselves and our neighbors. In addition to which, um, that issue of of the swale uh is a change to the plan. I don't know who put that in there in the last month. I don't know. Uh, it's changed to the plan that should be approved by this planning board. I'm not sure why it hasn't been uh, or who agreed to it. Um, and I'd like to have an answer to that before we agree anything. This plan that's been put together with Mr. Muhana and Mr. Anderson, I'm glad that they were able to come to some agreement, but is there any reason why we as a Butters, the ones who have the water coming down our driveway and to our yards and being affected by it, why we've been not been part of the plan? Uh, we asked and we're told and said back, Ms. Corcoran got an email from the town back in May saying uh, would have this addressed, they would have an as-built plan. My wife asked with as-built plan prior to the December, excuse me, the September fourth meeting. We haven't received it. We asked two weeks ago. We asked today from Ms. McCabe and she says she hasn't received it yet. Uh, I don't know how we can come up with a remediation plan for this without seeing the as-bills. I'm not sure why, since it's been asked for months, it has been uh brought up. Um, it's eleven hundred and twenty-four days since this plan was approved. Uh, we should definitely have that before we do anything. And I'm not sure why we're going forward with all this uh with any uh permits or any occupancy or anything else until we have the as-built, until we have an actual remediation plan, not promises that we'll have them down the road. One of the reasons perhaps, you know, so some of you members of the board who are uh not as familiar with this is, is sorry, because you may have been, haven't been on the board before when we, we had this. Uh, past performance is indicative of future performance. And uh, we went three years without the gates with all the trucks coming up. We had three years with the trucks in the backyard when the plan specifically says they're supposed to be in the driveway, four seventy-two, not on our easement. Um, we've had two years of runoff. Uh, we have three years without the gates. They still don't have ties on them. We still don't have a speed bump. They reconstructed a five hundred foot driveway and brought up utilities, but couldn't put in a speed bump. It seems uh somewhat ridiculous at this point. The driveway, I understand now is going to be brought into compliance, but wasn't, isn't in compliance as we speak. People have been in the house for a month now uh without a permit. Um, I'm not sure why um why haven't we gotten the, the, the as, that's the most important thing for our own engineers to look at. Uh, lastly, um, I just want to say that um, this would be the way that this has been built has uh put a um, a trespass and a nuisance on our property. Uh, this brings legal liability to the town. It's a clear violation of the reasonable use doctrine of the Massachusetts Supreme Court. Supreme Court has said that uh in order to avoid harm, it would be uh practical for an actor, meaning the owner, to avoid the harm and hold a part without undue hardship. This could have been removed uh at the very beginning, had they not brought in and raised about a fifty by fifty yard piece of property by three feet uh in height. We have the photographs of it with the field underneath, the fill on top of it, and then the back fill from the house on top of that. Uh, I, I have heard, not heard anything about why this back fill was, excuse me, not the back fill, but all this fill was brought in at the, and it flattened out when the original plan, if you look at it closely, has a grading uh to be left to the way the field was so that this water would not flow into our driveway. The water was flowing into the driveway simply because uh they came in and regraded the entire area with a three-foot height increase. Uh, pictures of that have been sent to the town and I have additional pictures which I can provide the planning board, um, if they would like. Uh, apparently that we, we were told here that pretty much there's been an agreement.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gillis. Mr. Gillis, did you have any other, any other specific items? If you'd like to get a chance to the other folks to.
Yes. Um, lastly, um, I don't believe that we've gotten proper notice for this meeting. Uh, this is a public meeting pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-eight that requires uh proper notice. It wasn't given. Um, in addition to which, if you look at paragraph fifteen of the agreement that the planning board's agreement for this property, it says that all actions taken that are inconsistent with uh the required variance of the plan, uh, the applicant shall be um uh make application to the planning board as, and shall uh give the requirements of forty-eight will go into place, saying that they have to give our planning board rules and regulations and that we have to get proper notice. This was never done. It's a violation of Tentacle versus City of Springfield that says proper notice must be given simply so that those who are affected by it will have an opportunity to be heard. We don't even know what the plan is, the remediation, what the plan is between Mr. Muhana. We don't know how much money is being withheld. Um, we don't know any of this. So I, if we don't know it and the town doesn't know it, I don't know how you can vote on this uh agreement at this point.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gillis.
Thank you.
Uh, Scotty Cochran. Oh, allowing, unmuting you if you can identify yourself and.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Scotty Cochran. I live at one twenty-six Westfield Street. Um, my property is directly behind um four eighty and four seventy-two um Summer Street. Um, good morning and thank you for, uh, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address my concerns over the development of four eighty Summer Street and Lot nine, now known as four seventy-two Summer Street. I understand we are here because of a request for modifications and field changes to the special permit and plans approved. The special permit was written by the town and the developer to address the concerns we had as a Butters. There were numerous meetings and discussions to come to this agreement. The proposed house location presented to us at the meeting along with the special permit guidelines brought to us, brought us to believe it would not significantly impact us. The town created this special permit and we are relying on the town to see it through as approved, along with the approved plans. My concern is the town has been notified by all of us at varying stages from the beginning that the development was not going according to the plan, special permit and guidelines. The town reassured us that everything was being done accordingly. My issues, um, no, no decision should be made unless you have an as-built plan, plain and simple. Comparisons need to be made, need to be made to what has been built and what was proposed. The formal report should be requested and it should be done by a disinterested party. The grade to the property has been altered significantly. I have lived here for just about twenty-four years. I used to play up in the field with my dogs and children when they were younger and the Saunders owned the property. The field, which is where the house was built, had depressions in the middle and it was similar to a bowl. I can visually tell now that the ground is so much higher than the driveway, that fill has been added. Think of inverting a bowl and place a house on top, at a pool, a patio, and now a sports court, more loam and sod, and the grade rises. And then Lot nine eight, which is the Mohana's property, also increased the grade from their house um near their um, their stone wall down to my property line. So not to mention the fact that when all this was happening, um, dirt was being pushed over the property line onto my property on two occasions. And the top left corner marker has been covered, lost. It's down in the dirt somewhere. Um, my point is that all this regrading has led to a major, a very major water issue for my property. Um, I'm not, I sent Abby a video, um, and she was supposed to forward it all to you, showing the water runoff from four seventy-two and forty Summer Street. Um, have you guys seen it? Anybody watch it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I actually contacted Abby in the beginning of May with my concern and I sent her my first video uh of rain pouring down the driveway. Um, she assured me that a resolution was being worked on. I had not heard back from her until I reached out at the end of August to see what was being done and provided her with the video which she should have sent, you all should have seen, um, which was taken on June sixth. Um, the water runoff in that video is amazing and you really need to watch it. Um, nothing has been addressed to resolve any of the flow water issues, but they finished the patio pool area and they've added a sports court, which is more hardscape for water to runoff and come down the driveway. Now, my property is on the low end of the driveway, so if you look at the video, you'll see how much water flows onto my property. Um, and it's just flooding it. Um, and then more recently, they did add they, um, those rocks for drainage, um, that's creating that swale on the driveway um to the new sod, um, near the sports court and pool patio, which um is not helping, it's helping their drainage issue, but it's flowing down the driveway um to the Gillises and my property. And moreover, the sprinkler system, which Michael ju- just um addressed, is now, the runoff from the sprinkler system is coming down as well. Um, so my yard um floods during the rain. The whole backyard is completely flooded. I have major erosion from all this water that has been coming down my backyard, side yard, to my front yard. Um, when I bought the house years and years ago, um, the house did have a French drain, but it's all now clogged with debris from the work site. Um, it's just a huge problem and water can cause all sorts of damage. I mean, it comes down in a gushing stream when it rains. Now, the development of the property should not cause harm to existing properties. This property ended up being built as close as possible to the Tofiloni's, Gillises and my property. According to the special permit project findings, number ten, the project as modified by the conditions of the decision will not be detrimental to the town or the general character and visual appearance of surrounding properties and will be consistent with all applicable standards set forth in the Westwood zoning bylaws, section six point one two eight and the planning board's rules and regulations for special, for special permits. I have a direct view of the house, the sports court and the pool and can hear them much more now from where the house has been built, especially when they're out playing on the basketball court. Um, what is a resolution to this whole thing? Um, I would like to see the town do its job and comply with the special permit and plans as it was created and approved. Um, this grading issue is um big. And, you know, when you get the as-built plan, I have no doubt you will see how much the grade has increased. Um, I don't, what is the point of having a special permit if the builder owner is going to do whatever they want and not follow the guidelines? And then come back to the board after the fact to ask for modifications, basically asking for forgiveness. The water issue needs to be resolved. My property needs to be cleaned. My French drain needs to be cleaned and redone. Um, the lot line up at the top of the property needs to be reestablished and graded back to the plan specifications. Um, and there's a twenty-foot buffer zone condition in the special permit for all sides except for the back part of the property where it's a fifty-foot buffer. Um, maybe the shared driveway needs to be taken out from the circle down to the Gillises backyard as a part of the resolution as it's really acting like a slide for the water. Um, maybe more trees should be planted, maybe a berm created. But most importantly, a drainage system needs to be installed to prevent the water flowing to my property. Um, I feel the Gillises and myself should be involved with the resolution of the water issue as it affects us directly. We have a combined collection of photos documenting this whole project from the beginning to now. I do not feel the special permit and plans warrant any modifications. I propose occupancy not be granted until the town does its job and making sure all the issues have been resolved and all the conditions have been met as approved in the special permit and approved building plan. The development of the property should not be a detriment to abutting properties. It's very disconcerting when our concerns as a Butters are not being addressed, essentially being pushed off or dismissed. And yet we are having a meeting regarding modifications and allowances of tech, temporary occupancy permit for four seventy-two Summer Street. And I'm out of curiosity, have any or all the members been to the site? If not, I invite you um to the site and I would gladly meet with you um and show you my property as what's going on. Um, thank you.
Oh, thank you. And um, I know that uh when we, I was the only board member who was on the board uh when the original decision was uh made and um we, we visited the site and saw it then. I went back um, and before the last meeting, to take a look. I went back um and before the last meeting, to take a look at things uh too. So I have seen things there. Let's see, I think someone else raised their hand, so I recognize. Abby, did you have something?
Right, we, um, I could, you know, there's been a number of issues that have come up that I could start addressing maybe. I know there's, I think there is another abutter here, but I could respond to some of the questions that have come up.
Why don't you, why don't you respond then and we'll come to Mr. Tofaloni after that.
Okay. You know, um, the abutters did notify us and we did go out, um, our building inspector and um our town engineer beta group did a calculation um on the earth, earth material, earthwork calculations and did find that it, the um amount of soil that was um, fill that was moved around did not trigger an earth material movement review. Um, we did go out earlier in the project in two thousand eighteen um when this came up by one of the abutters, um, when there was fill removed for the excavation of the foundation. Um, fill moved with foundation is exempt from that work. Um, so it's, it's a large house, a large deep foundation with a deep basement. So there was a lot of earth that was excavated and um and placed elsewhere in sight. So um, we did have in your packet for tonight, some updated earthwork calculations and, and it does show that the total import and export is, was um, in total movement is less, did not trigger the specific earth material movement review. It was, the net total was under the two hundred cubic yards. Um, and then we have, um, we have requested from, from uh the Andersons an as-built plan to clearly show those um property lines, also um a stormwater drainage plan that is required under the stormwater review bylaw under the conservation commission. Um, so there was some drainage work that was done, but it was not reviewed and approved. So that's still, that does need, need to happen. So that would be submitted to staff and um conservation for review. So we are um asking for that and we would like that. We, we know that, we want that as soon as um possible. In the draft agreement that we've been working on, it um calls for um so for tonight, what you're considering is a temporary occupancy provided an agreement um is executed also with funds provided upfront um prior to any temporary occupancy. And those funds would be provided in hand and then if the work is not all completed by December first or the, the relocation of the connecting drive, if, if you agree to extend that out to the spring. Um, if the work is not done by that time, then the town would take those funds and, and complete the work. Um, however, we don't want that to happen. We want um the two owners to um work diligently and to get that work done as soon as possible. I, I know um the hydrant is in progress. Um, they have started that process with the water districts. That is one thing that's underway and is still getting scheduled right now, but we do need um to review a stormwater improvement plan um for that, that drainage does need to be submitted in, submitted for review and approval and implemented. Um, also what you're reviewing tonight, it's um, the request for you is a request for a minor modification of the approved plan. Um, and so the only change is really the gr- the grading for the lot at four seventy-two, the pool and the court. So that's, that's for you, the plenty of work to consider tonight, um, if you think those are minor. Um, so you'll vote on, you vote on that. If it's not minor, then it would be um a full public hearing requirement um with this, a special permit amendment. However, I, I think without, without the change to the driveway, if the driveway goes back to um where it was supposed to connect with the shared driveway, I think the, the addition of the pool and a sports court can be considered minor in terms of, you know, your primary review in two thousand seventeen was the sh- the shared driveway. You uh reviewed plans. It, it is a change and that's why it needs a stormwater review and why we need those as-built plans also to conform the um, the boundaries. Um, but when you initially reviewed the plans, you didn't so much review the details of the house. You were really focused on the shared driveway and the um easement and public safety, um, getting in and out of the property.
I mean, what is? Sorry, I'm sorry. I just wanted to do, if, if possible, it's Brian Anderson. I just wanted to address the, the one comment that I think both neighbors made about the, the swale um that was put in with the crushed stone at the base of our um, our lot line. And that wasn't done as a permanent um solution. That was done just as a temporary solution to try to come up with something until the engineer, our engineer came up with a more permanent solution um or a plan for oh, uh, stormwater mitigation for that side of the, of the yard. Um, so that wasn't done. That was, that wasn't done as a permanent. That was done just to, to try to, because we had been hearing from Abby and from um the building department that there were complaints about water, increased water coming down the, down the easement.
So it didn't work. It's still, it didn't work.
Right. And that was not a, that was not approved. So Brian, we do need submitted for approval, for review and approval prior to implementation.
Yeah, I can, like I said, I can remove it. I just thought it would, it would be temporarily before we got the plan, it would be something that would potentially help um any, any uh water that is, is being reported coming off the lot.
Um, Abby, what's the total amount of, the amount of money that's in escrow for this?
We had estimated um eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty total for, for everything.
And then you said that if um, if, if it, if the work doesn't get done for whatever reason, then the town would actually be able to go in and, and do the work like on, on their property. Is that part of the agreement? Okay, I want to clarify that. Um, why don't we go back to Mr. Tofaloni? Um, let me, and we'll come back if there's additional questions, but um, well, I'm going to let him s- speak now.
Good evening. Is everybody able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Joe Tofaloni and I reside at sixty-five Bridge Road. Um, we're on the back, we're on the backside of the um four seventy-two Summer Stu- Summer Street property. I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank the the board for the opportunity to speak at the meeting. I also, we also would like to welcome the Andersons to the neighborhood. Um, we wish that this wasn't the start um for the relationship and we feel a little bit uncomfortable and think it's a bit um, a bit unfortunate. Um, the, for the special permit to get passed, um, there was, there was an extensive public process that involved four, four different meetings. Um, the abutters that are speaking tonight were all opposed to the special permit for various reasons. On July, on the, in the July eleventh of two thousand seventeen meeting, a vote was called for by the board and the, and the special permit was um was denied. Then the board went and reconsidered. They reopened the discussion and they approved the special permit. Now, as part of the process and during the process, the, the applicant um who was Coastal Development, they, they were the ones that had their engineer do the plans and as part of going through the public process, they added a lot of features to the plans which they, which they provided um a revised set of drawings in July of two thousand seventeen after the meeting. And they added things to address the concerns of the abutters and we had valid concerns which they, which they on their own made changes to on the plans. Um, when the, when the meeting transpired on August twenty-second, the, the town had included twenty-two conditions in the special permit, which were going to be in addition to the plans. Now, when we reviewed what was in the special permit, it was, you know, it was our understanding that our concerns were addressed and we were looking to the town to make sure that, that, in which we understood they would do, that the project would be completed in accordance to the special permit. Now, unfortunately, it appears that we're going back and trying to rewrite history now because the, I, I do object um to a few things that Abby said. One thing that I do object to is Abby is considering what, what's been done to be minor changes and I do object to the, to this being considered as minor changes because I do think what's transpired has been major. And I'm a, I'm a little bit, I'm not a little bit, but very concerned about the way the transgression has happened. For starters, I'm a little, I'm concerned and I've raised this to the town about the fact that the property was conveyed by the original owner to the new owner and the special permit is not included as in part, as part of the deed. And that there are a few things from the special permit that are in there, but not the full special permit and especially not things that are, that are germane to, to the Tofaloni's. Um, and I'm, and I'm concerned about the fact and um Abby did bring up that um your butters have raised issues and the issues were raised right in the beginning when the project started. And we were assured that the town would, would ensure that the project was built in accordance with the permits. Now, Abby commented about the um, that the town had an earthwork calculation done um by their engineer and I appreciate, I thank you very much, Abby, for including it in the package and also for letting me know about it. Um, I did go through the, the earthwork um worksheet that was provided by your engineer and I'm going to request that the town have this gone through again because the calculations are incorrect. Um, I did take a look at them. Um, they have issues with the depths of the cut based on what the plan set that was turned into the, for the building permit and what the existing condition, what the existing elevations are on the site. And then the other thing is the basement area that's depicted in the calculations is, is overstated. It appears that the engineers included the garage in the calculations for the area of the basement, whereas according to the plans that are included in your package, um, that garage is a slab on grade with uh four-foot frost walls and a footing underneath. And that, that makes a dramatic change to the calculations. Furthermore, I'm not sure how anybody is doing earthwork calculations without doing an as-built of where the site is today, because if you do an as-built of where the site today, compare it to what the existing conditions were in the special permit and in the as-built, in the, in the existing conditions that were submitted to the building department, take into account the fill that was generated from the, the house and the indoor sports court, you're going to see exactly what the delta is. And we've asked for this to happen and it hasn't happened. So, and it appears from what's in the calculations that were done by the town, that on the fi- house fill volumes and on the driveway fill volumes, that they've used the grades that are on the, the um set of plans that were sent into the building department as part of the permit. And those are not the grades. The grading that's on the, on the permit plans are not the grades that are out there. Now, i- interestingly enough, and I'm not sure why it's not on the deed and, and that, that might be an issue that the, the Andersons have with, with another party because um I, I was under the understanding that both four seventy-two and four seventy-six Summer Street would have to adhere to these permits, to the special permit. And the concern that I have is since we've raised issues all along and these issues have not been addressed by the town, the town drafted the permit, they administered the special permit and they're enforcing the special permit. And to date, we haven't seen that happen and there are numerous issues. And there's a lot of things that have just been done. So there are still more conditions in that special permit that apply and are there to safeguard the abutters. And I'm also concerned based on, on what's happened to date, whether or not these things are going to happen a- and actually materialize. And one of the conditions is the buffer, the fifty-foot buffer and the twenty-foot buffer on the south side was put into place because of the, the abutters from High Ridge Estates with us being one and with the High Ridge Estates Homeowners Association. And I'd really hate to see that these, that the, the top, the plans showed a no-cut tree zone, the town put in a buffer zone. And I'm wondering what, how we are going to be assured that we don't come home one day and something happens to these, to this buffer and then we're doing what we're doing again today. Um, it, it does, I, I feel in a very uncomfortable and victimized position as far as with what's going on. And I just don't, I don't think the process is working right now. And I'm also not sure, and I agree with what our neighbors have stated. Regardless of what plans put forward, since things haven't happened the way they were supposed to happen to date, what assurances do we have that anything's going to happen right in the future? And with the, with the raising, with what's been done, it does affect all of the abutting properties. And, and with that, we do take exception to, and I'm kind of, I'm also a little bit curious because um, it is my understanding and looking at what the town has, is that the, the, the Department of Community and Economic Development, which oversees everything, one of the functions that they do serve is to be an advocate of the interests of the residents, of which the abutters are residents of the town. And I'm, I'm very curious, the whole public process was gone through and the concerns and questions of the abutters were addressed, but now in this final stage, all of the abutters are, are out of the process and we have the town negotiating with two other parties, with us excluded. And there are conditions in the, in the special permit that haven't been adhered to that directly affect us. So we had the ability back when the special permit was passed to appeal it. And we chose not to because of what's in the permit and because the safeguard we had that the town would ensure that this would happen this way. Now, the, we're rewriting history. We've lost our ability to appeal this. And now the conditions are trying to be changed and, and I just don't, I just don't think it's, it's fair. I mean, I'm, I did let the town know early on when we noticed things that were deviant, that we were relying on the town to ensure that it got built accordingly. And when the town did respond about things, saying things were in conformance, we did let them know that they weren't and why. So I'm trying to figure out why we're even here today because had everything been done the way it was supposed to be, this, this would all be a moot point. And all of the abutters are being required to spend, we, we're spending a tremendous amount of time on this matter. We're going through a lot of anguish over what's going on and, and it's affecting our properties. And, you know, I don't want to be continuing to do this. I want to have a, a good relationship with our neighbors and I'm really looking for the town to do what it's supposed to do and to what it, it set out to do because I, you know, that's, that's what I'm expecting. And I'm also expecting whatever code, laws, ordinances or everything that either town-wise or statewide, that, that everything be adhered to. So, you know, I'm, I, once again, I do thank you for the time to speak. I do hope that whatever has been brought up is taken into consideration as far as how things move forward. And I am hoping that the town does do the right thing as far as moving forward on this process. And thank you very much for, for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Tofaloni. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to lower the hands here because I'm not sure if um if people, if anyone had raised their hand that wanted to speak, but um, is there any further public comment? Yes, um, Ms. Cochran, do you want to speak again? I will unmute you.
I just really think it's important that um you guys or everybody sees the video of the water. So I, I would wish that they would watch that. That written video that.
I've, I've seen the video uh and that was actually, well, that was the week, that was a couple of weeks before the hu- huge uh, the Norwood Hospital thing and all.
Yeah, the, the June sixth um weekend. We had, yeah, yeah. So I mean, I know we haven't had. So I mean, I know we haven't had much rain this summer, but you know, we have had rain, you know, when it stops raining again. And then when the snow, when the snow melts and all that. So just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Abby.
I guess, uh, I just want to add a little bit more in response. Um so in 2017, the planning board reviewed a shared driveway special permit. So the primary purpose of the um special permit was the planning board is really reviewing the shared, the shared driveway to these two additional lots that were allowed by right because they have the minimum lot size and frontage. Um, so at that time, the planning board did um find that the special permit for the shared driveway was beneficial because it was only adding, um, I mean, it's in the existing location of where the driveway, the existing driveway is instead of adding two additional um driveways close to the Westfield Street intersection, which is also a scenic road and didn't require any further tree removal. Um, also during the 2017 public hearings, the planning board did work with the applicant um to develop um a number of conditions and to revise these plans to help um, address some of these concerns that were raised by the Butters tonight in, in 2017 with the um maintaining the existing mature trees and um and protecting the um easement by installing um the gates, installing a gate at the front of the existing easement. So there's a paved easement that goes out the back that's existed there, that's been there for a long time. Um, so that was in existence then and the planning board did impose these conditions um for gates and signage and a speed bump to be added to limit um feature vehicles from driving down there at the back. Um, and so how the normal process works is um once a permit has been issued, the applicant moves forward with developing the lots and they've submitted building permits to the town. The town um did review them and required that they submit, they match the 2017 approved plans. There was um a requirement for stormwater management review by the conservation agent. Um, that did not occur. Um, so the conservation agent has not signed off on that part. So then prior to occupancy, the various staff goes out and, and looks. And so myself and the conservation agent and the building commissioner have not issued an occupancy permit. Because these conditions and plan requirements have not been, have not been met. Um, so right now what you're reviewing is an option for a temporary occupancy with a, a an agreement that clearly outlines and specifies what needs to be completed and by what, when. And provides motivation to get it done by having the two owners put up funds upfront um to make sure that work gets done. If, if that is done, then those funds are returned after it's completed and inspected by the town. Um, however, when the planning board reviews uh a shared driveway special permit or, you know, resident, single-family residential, the planning board's purview isn't development of the house per se. Um, it was really looking at the public safety access um and, and, and trying to work um in that regard. Um, so we have not signed off on occupancy permit. And to my understanding, uh, last week, the building commissioner has um sent out a notice of a violation to um the new house lot um currently to um for occupying without a um occupancy permit.
Thanks Abby. Um, let's see, did um Mr. Gillis, did you want to say something else again briefly or? I just saw your.
I, I just had a question. Without a plan and without an as-built, how did the town come up with that amount to be sufficient? Should the work not be completed?
Okay, Abby, you're on.
Right, we had our um, our town engineer had provided a breakdown of cost. Um, and as-built is a pretty standard requirement for, for many projects. Um, we don't have the drainage plan, so we had to estimate um what a, a final drainage um plan would cost. Um, there's also a contingency that's much higher for the town's estimate than if the, than if the homeowners do it themselves. It's not, um, it doesn't cost as much. So the amount that we are requesting is a lot higher than if, if the homeowners um do the work themselves.
All right, um, thank you for the, for everyone's comments. Um maybe it would be useful for board members, I'm going to call on people to just see if you have some rather than waiting to see if anyone wants to raise their hands. So, I don't know, Mr. Pfaff, do you have any thoughts to kick this off? You're muted though, we are not able to hear you.
Forgot I muted myself. Um how long would it take for an as-built to be done? Right now. It's sound, I, I've heard that from all three residents that spoke. They would like a, a base level right now of the uh the property as it sits. How long would that take to get done? It seems like a, a good starting point if, if we're coming up with a plan. It seems like it's the starting point that an engineer has to go through anyway. And I believe I heard before that it's in process right now of being done. So it seems like an engineer would have done that to start with.
My guess would be within, within a couple of weeks. It's just the drainage part of the as-built plan that um needs to be updated.
So I'm, I'm trying to understand the town's recourse. If this is not done and the board authorizes a temporary certificate of occupancy, if this is not done by December 1st, what, I mean, right now, they don't have a certificate of occupancy. What do you remove that? And the family has to be relocated at, on December 2nd? Is that what we're talking about? And are they, once we issue this tonight, they're allowed to legally move in tomorrow?
Well, no, not, I mean, not tomorrow. We would need to finalize an agreement and get the funds. So I would not sign off on, I mean, the building department would not issue.
Okay, so whenever it's approved?
Not until it's finally executed and the funds provided. Um, also, um, the agreement calls for if the work isn't done by a certain date, um, say December 1st, then the funds would be um the town could take the funds and then the owner would also have to vacate the home or start receiving fines um for, from the building department, which could be up to a thousand dollars a day.
Abby, does the um, do the funds that are in that account, I mean, is any of that going to go towards mitigation of the flooding situation? Or is, is that, is that connected?
Yeah, so we have in there the, the drainage, the drainage plan. So we are asking, you know, including the, the stormwater design and installation, we included in that estimate.
Mr. Pfaff, did you have any, any other?
No, it, it's just, it puts the planning board in a really bad situation. Um, I mean, the town is not in the doesn't want to get in the situation where it's relocating a family. But at the same time, what has happened on this property is adversely affecting the Butters. And that was done without any approval. And so I, I do feel for the Butters who are going through this. Um, because it shouldn't have happened. And I understand what they're saying that it shouldn't have happened the first time. How do we know it's going to be fixed now? And I guess what's being asked of the planning board is give us another eight to 10 weeks and we'll fix it. And um, I have to agree. It sounds like the temporary swell that was put in, again, it doesn't seem like there's an understanding that every time you do something like this, you, there is a process that needs to be followed. And it's just not being done. So I have concerns about about this and, and the way it's played out. Um, I'm not saying I'm completely against it, but I just, I have some some concerns here moving forward.
Mr. Delay, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, uh, well, anytime Butters are uh disturbed, um, I feel for them and, and and I don't think anything that we do should um disrupt people's lives. And uh their uh the way that they live their lives. So uh, right now, I I think we have to move this on and, uh, and take a look at it and um go back and have them make sure that the Butters are happy with what's going on before we make a final decision. I think um obviously from what they're saying, they've gone to the town many times, not to us particularly, but to the town many times and they're, uh, they're falling either on debt fears or, or something. Things haven't been done. So I, I, I I can't move on on this right now.
I, I would just like to say one thing, which is the only thing that is brought, has been brought to our attention um that was affecting the Butters was the uh, the report of additional water coming off the lot to uh, I think our neighbor um Scotty. That's the only, that's the only thing that I knew that, or, or am aware of that is adversely affecting or reportedly adversely affecting um the Butters. And um, we are taking steps to mitigate that with uh, with uh, our engineer coming out to, to to propose a plan to put in some additional stormwater mitigation plans.
But that's not the, that's not the, what the Butters are saying tonight. And I, and and again, come December 1st or what have you, if I was out walking my dog, I, I'd want to fall on the ice or what have you that's been caused by this. Uh, it, it's a safety issue. It's not only just a safety issue, it's a way of life. Uh, I believe that the Butters, I believe what they're saying.
Dave, I do just want to reiterate, despite what I said about my misgivings about moving forward, I am here to be a part of the solution. We have a problem. Things didn't go right. We're all here to try to fix this. And so we need to come up with collectively the best way we possibly can to fix this. Not just for the Butters, but for the uh, for the Anderson family as well and also the Mohanas. We're a part of this. Admittedly, we were tangentially a part of this with a, a shared driveway application three years ago, but we have to look at this as we are the solution here. So we can't just kick this down the road any further. So we, we do need to be proactive here in, in how we address this.
Ms. Conan, do you have, would you like to say anything?
Yes, um, you know, there's been quite a few infractions by the owner. And many of the Butters have been aggrieved by their misdoings. So I'm really not sure that this is considered minor based on what's happening. And I guess we need to really focus on how can we best expedite the resolution for both of them. And I'm not sure that, how are we going to come to that right now? Because the owner has certain expectations and the Butters have certain expectations. And is this minor? My opinion, no. But having public hearings, is that going to, how long is that going to prolong things for? And if we give them a, a completion date by December 1st, if it doesn't happen, then how much longer is it going to take for the town, for the town to get those, those um issues resolved? And so these Butters are then dealing with issues of ice and water and damage to their property. So it's, I think it's a bigger issue than what, than we're actually um seeing right now. And, and the prolongation of it is, is concerning.
Ms. McCabe, you want to?
Um, just in, in response to, to clarify for everyone, um you know, the normal process is no occupancy until all the work is, is completed. Um, until recently, this was an active construction project. Um, so there's, there has been no occupancy. Um, there was no action for the planning board to take. There was no action for me as, as staff can take. It was you know, in, in August when um the new homeowner was looking to move into the home. Um, you're here tonight considering this temporary occupancy along with funds and agreement. And the primary purpose of that is to get the work done as quickly as possible. Without uh any agreement or without a temporary occupancy or without funds being provided, then you're still in the same situation you've been in all summer. Whereas no occupancy and it's just an active construction project. I mean, we are trying to work with the Andersons so that they can move into their home. Um, so you know, he can finish up the work and then we could um issue an occupancy permit. But this agreement is trying to get the work done as quickly as possible and trying to give reasons to motivate um both the owners to work diligently to get that, get that done.
But if we don't, if they don't get it done by December 1st, do we have an expectation of when the town could take those funds and have the work done?
Well, we could take it right away and then we'd have to um start working on it.
I mean, I just think those are questions that they're going to have. How much, you know, if it's not done by December 1st, how long is it going to take from there? Because they don't, obviously they're having issues now. And as the weather gets worse, it's just going to get more cumbersome for them.
Well, as the bad weather comes, it makes it also, the nature of this work that we're talking about doing is contingent on good weather.
Correct.
In large, in large part. Not only will it make it worse for the Butters with runoff, but it'll make it harder to come in and make the repairs if it's not done before December.
Mr. Chair, this is Nora Loughnane. Could I make a couple of comments that I think, just to make sure everyone's on the same page here? First of all, the certificate of occupancy would not be issued by the planning board. It would be issued by the building department. So tonight, the planning board's not being asked to grant a certificate of occupancy. The planning board's being asked to prevent, to, to, to permit um a level of flexibility that would be necessary to reach a resolution that allows the Andersons to continue living in the property while the work is completed. So right now, the building commissioner has already issued um a notice of violation. Fines are accruing at the rate of up to $2,600 a day. Um, and those accrue from the first date of illegal occupancy, which the building commissioner believes to have occurred in early August. So there's a significant amount of, of penalty on the line here. The shared driveway special permit had very clear conditions and all of those conditions had to be met prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The CVO has not been issued yet. The problem is just that the Andersons are living in the home prematurely. So if that was not the case, we would consider this a, a, an ongoing project. And the Mohanas and the Andersons would continue to work on the project until the shared driveway was complete. Just as a reminder, the planning board's shared driveway special permit is all about the driveway. It's about how the driveway is built, how the driveway is used, how the driveway was designed. It's about the fire hydrant that serves the lots. It's about the, uh, the gates, the speed bump, the signage that went in, all to get a shared driveway which properly serves the three lots that allows those lots to then be created by the A and R plan and developed under building permits. The development of the new lots really is not part of the special permit. That's, that's separate and apart. The development of the new lots themselves is under a building permit. If that development brings about the need for a conservation commission approval, either for land um for stormwater management or for wetland disturbance, that's another issue. If the development of those lots requires earth material movement that triggers a, an earth material movement approval by the, by the planning board, that's another issue too, separate from the shared driveway. So I think we have to be careful to look at this as just the shared driveway that we're talking about tonight. And the request to the planning board is whether you think it's a minor modification or a full modification to provide the flexibility that allows the Andersons to stay in their home, put up cash escrow to allow the work to be completed while they live in the home. So that, I think it's a much more narrow issue that you're being asked to consider tonight. There are lots of problems that we've seen. The special permit was not fully adhered to. We're trying to correct those. Abby has been working with the Andersons and the Mohanas and the Butters for months now, trying to get a process in place. So I think if the planning board members can focus on whether the process that's proposed, which allows for this temporary CVO to be issued by the building commissioner, if he finds that everything is in order, that Abby has signed off on work that is done or work that will be done with proper funds in place. with proper funds in place to allow that to happen. There's there's nothing here that's saying that conditions of the special permit will be changed. The driveway is being proposed to be built now as shown on the plans as originally proposed. The speed bump is proposed to go in. The fire hydrant's proposed to go in. The gate is already in. The strap will be added. The signage, I believe, is in place. If it isn't, it will be put up. So all the conditions of that special permit, we're still looking at enforcing all of those conditions. The real question is whether the Andersons can continue to live in the home. So if tonight the planning board members believe that they can allow a minor modification, consider it a minor modification to allow that to happen, you can vote that way and Abby can continue to work with the Andersons and the Mohanis to get the funding in place and to see to an eventual issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy and then full completion of the work. However, if the planning board doesn't feel that they can consider that a minor modification, then what happens is you leave this meeting tonight, there's no agreement on the table and the building commissioner goes about enforcing the violation that notice that's been given and collecting on the up to $2,600 a day since the early August occupancy of the building. In the meantime, the Andersons, I would imagine, would have to move out of the property to prevent additional fines for additional days because that would continue for for quite a while until the work is done until a CVO could be issued. So there's a there's a lot on the line here. Things were not done properly. Abby has been working very hard to find a solution that that lets everything get completed properly. If there are other issues regarding grading, stormwater management, any approvals that have not yet been granted, those will be treated in the format that they need to be treated. So when the stormwater management plan is submitted to the conservation agent, if it triggers a full review before the conservation commission, that will be set up. And at that time, abutters will all be notified. If it triggers an earth material movement special permit or earth material movement approval, the planning board will be given that application. All the abutters will be notified and will go through that process. But if none of those items are triggered, if all the work is done in accordance with the original special permit and you've put this temporary certificate of occupancy plan in place and we have funds on hand, everything can get done. Now, the town does not want to take that money and do the work. If they did that, a member asked when that would be done, certainly not before spring. There's nothing going to be done in December. So if if December first is the set date and the work is not completed in December, and then the town takes over the funds and has to bid out contracts and get people in line to do the work, it will certainly not be before spring. So it's in everyone's interest that the funds are put aside in the right amount, that the work is done and that those funds are given back to the owners when the work is done and a full certificate of occupancy is issued. But I just want to get back to the gating question tonight is, is this a minor modification to give the flexibility that allows Abby to go forward with this plan? Or is it not? We're not saying is it a minor modification to change the plan? That clearly wouldn't be. If all the plan is enacted, it's just delayed to allow this disagreement to be put in place and to allow the Andersons to live in the home while the work is being done. That's the question. Is that a minor modification?
Thanks, Nora. Rob, Mr. Cotty, do you?
Yeah, first thank Nora for the explanation of what is the purview of this board versus the building department, the conservation commission, because that was one of the questions that I was going to ask, so that is helpful. One of the things that I've got concerns with to echo some of the other folks is sort of the pattern of, you know, sort of flouting some of the things that were part of the special permit earlier. So I mean, we're talking about and Nora, I'd like a clarification on this. The minor modification that you are talking about is related to the driveway movement, correct? Because, okay, thank you.
Just this special, it's the the minor modification would allow implementation of the conditions of the driveway approval after the Andersons received the right to live in their home rather than the other way around. So the way this special permit was written, the Andersons were not permitted to move in. They would not receive a certificate of occupancy until the special permit conditions for the shared driveway special permit were all met. We know they haven't all been met. And so the question is, would you allow a reverse of that order? Would you allow Abby to work out a plan that allows the Andersons to live in the home while the special permit conditions are completed?
And then, you know, just to address something that Mr. Toffeloni said earlier is there is question around the beta calculations because that would have brought this back to the board for earth material movement. I'm just a little concerned there is a dispute over that because it seems like that is the central piece of the stormwater runoff that Ms. Cochran showed the video of and Mr. Gillis and Mr. Toffeloni both spoke to.
So just to comment on that. So Abby asked two separate engineers to run the calculations. One is Mike Perkins or one of our building inspectors and the other is Phil Paradis with Bader Group Engineering, who is our contracted town engineer. Both found that the amount of fill that came out of the foundation hole was so significant that the total fill spread on the property did not exceed 200 cubic yards. They can be asked to redo those calculations. We could even ask a third engineer to do that. If it's found that more than 200 cubic yards of fill was brought into the property, then there wouldn't be a need for an earth material movement approval from the planning board. That's on the house lot. That's on 472. There's, I think we have to separate the issues. The one issue is the shared driveway that leads to the three homes that has a special permit now. The other issue is how the Andersons lot has been or will be developed under its building permit, whether it needs an earth material movement approval and whether it needs a stormwater management approval. I think we're all comfortable that it absolutely needs stormwater management. The question we have on that is whether it's an administrative approval for over 5,000 square feet of disturbance or whether it's a full conservation commission approval for over a half acre of disturbance. The Asbeld plan will tell us that. The stormwater management plan will tell us that as well. So that's a question of how much land was disturbed. But again, that's on the lot. You have to treat the lot separate than you separate from the way you treat the special permit for the shared driveway that allows the lots to be created in the first place. They really are. They're interrelated, but but distinct issues.
So Nora, even discussion about stormwater at this point for this board is outside the purview of why we're here to talk. Sounds like what you're saying.
We were discussing stormwater management approval that was needed for implementation of the driveway. That would be under the special permit. Discussing stormwater management approval that's needed for construction of the house and the pool and the sports court, that comes, that's under the building permit. That's not under the special shared driveway special permit. The reason it's been brought up tonight, the reason it's an issue is that the certificate of occupancy cannot be issued temporary or otherwise until the special permit conditions are are addressed, until any stormwater management conditions are addressed and until any earth material movement approval, if needed, is granted. So there's a whole bunch of branches to this tree that all have to be solved. Abby's concern right now is whether or not she can say that a temporary certificate of occupancy can be issued for on to complete the terms of the special permit. That's the one issue that she's asking you about tonight. If you give her that flexibility to do that, she can allow a certificate of occupancy to be issued saying that the terms of the of the shared driveway special permit have either been met or there's funding in place to allow them to be met. She'll still have to work with the conservation agent on the stormwater management issue. And if we find that there was more than 200 cubic yards of fill brought in, she'll need to come back to you with an application for earth material movement. So so there's
Just to clarify, we are the we are the first in three gates that need to be sort of cleared in order for a CO to be issued.
That's right.
How do we ignore the concerns of the abutters?
You should not ignore the concern of the abutters. So the concerns of the abutters have to do with the way the Andersons lot has been developed. The abutters believe that more earth material movement was made than is permitted. They believe that more than 200 cubic yards of fill were brought in. We need to continue our research into whether that's the case. As I said, we have two engineers to tell us that was not the case. We need to see the Asbeld plans and we need to see the stormwater management plan, both of which will help the engineers get a better get better feel for how much fill was actually brought in. So I absolutely should not ignore the concerns of the abutters. The concerns of the abutters on the special permit, however, had to do with the driveway, with the the emergency egress from the driveway, with the speed bump and the closure of the gate and the signage. Those were all issues that are under the special permit and the abutters concerns there are that the special permit plan be instituted for the shared driveway as originally approved. And that's what Abby's asking too. She's not asking you to alter that plan. She's not asking you to allow the driveway to the Andersons lot to be as it's constructed. She's she's saying that it has to go back to the way it was originally approved. So there wouldn't be a change to those plans, the special permit plans with regard to the shared driveway. If there are problems with the way the lot itself was developed, then that has to be addressed in accordance with the rules governing the development of that lot.
So how do we help the abutters right now and keep water from disturbing their lives?
You require a stormwater management application to be submitted at the earliest possible time. Perhaps if you do consider this request before you tonight and minor modification, you can grant it with a condition that that stormwater map application be filed no later than next Friday. And that action in accordance with the approval that comes out of that be taken by the end of December rather than allowing it to go into the next next spring.
Because that's my main concern. My main concern is I don't want their lives disrupted disrupted anymore.
Understood. That's why Abby has been working so hard on this for months, trying to work with all the parties, trying to get this resolved because it's going on. I think Abby first went out there the first week in August and tried to resolve it then and it's simply, we're not getting to a resolution.
And we can we can relieve this.
Excuse me?
We can relieve this. We can relieve their frustrations. We can help them.
I believe you can. I think that by allowing a process to go forward, by allowing funds to be put in place to get the work done, I think that speeds up the process of doing the work. And by making a condition that the stormwater management approval be submitted as soon as possible. And I I would suggest putting a firm date on the end of it would cause this to happen. We've been looking for this to be done for quite some time and it hasn't been yet.
I think that this is a case where we need to act on this because we've seen other, I won't name the case, but there was, you know, there's a long running project that it took forever to resolve stormwater issues and everything. And here we have an opportunity to engage in this process. None of the things that are going to force someone's hand are going to be fast, you know. So if we say that if the town's going to do the work, that's too late. If we're going to even if we were to say that they need to do an earth materials movement permit, I mean, that's a whole other, why don't we just say they have to do the stormwater now? We can do that right now. Connected to these these other things here. I mean, there was a slight in the you know, the field modifications. I mean, it's the that's the thing that's being asked to also consider as a minor modification, but I think it's we're connecting to the the money is out there to require things to go back to the plan for the driveway like it originally was supposed to be. And then we are also engaging the stormwater permit process in here. So it seems like this you've got the attention of everybody now. Like, I don't know what happened in the last three years, but the town is is on this now and the the people are here. They're saying they're going to work to make the, you know, both owners are saying they're going to conform to the driveway plan. Because when this came to us three years ago, I mean, the argument was basically, you know, if we could have three driveways or one driveway and having one driveway would be better for the town. And the concerns about the truck drivers, the UPS and all that kind of stuff potentially going through people's driveways. We wanted to avoid that at all costs. But we didn't really get into what the house was going to look like. So yeah, it looks different from maybe what we anticipated. But that's because the the issue was all about this this driveway and the idea that by only having one driveway on Summer Street, that would preserve Summer Street instead of having like three in a row. Because we forget there's a there's a third lot that's carved out of this as well that's tucked in there. So I think that yeah, I'm I like I share the frustration with the process and all, but I don't, we can't force things to magically happen. But unless we find an agreement like this, and I think that getting that stormwater stuff addressed is the the critical thing. It's always the water, you know, like in that video, the flooding. We got to find a solution to that. You know, it wasn't part of the original review. It wasn't, we didn't, that was not a part of the original thing, but it feel kind of like, you know, you you break it, you bought it sort of thing here. We we've all been working on on this project. They they wanted this, we agreed, they agreed to have the special permit. And so now we need to like work together to get it right. So I would it seems like we need to, I would support.
Dave, I just want to, I want to ask a clarifying question, right? So the special permit is all about the driveway, right? You mentioned the field, but the field is part of the development of the property. And so that, to me, I think, becomes part of the building inspector and 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 the plan that goes forward there. We are the first step in because this is required before anything else can go forward. We are the first step in the granting of a CO, but we don't grant the CO. We just have to give our blessing on the minor modification to the driveway. If there were no stormwater issue, if there were no butter complaints and they were in the home and we were just talking about moving the driveway, that's probably an easy one for us to consider as a minor modification. It's these other issues that really fall outside the purview of this planning board that are putting us in this awkward situation. Is that is that a fair summary?
That's correct.
Field, I wasn't saying, I mean, the field, I meant field modifications, like the basketball court, the and the issues with the, are we sure that the buffers have been respected and all that? It sounded like there were some changes to the overall plan that we would need to approve as well as minor modifications, separate from the certificate of occupancy.
So let's get back to the the sports court and the pool. The question about those simply goes to the buffer, whether the buffer was maintained or not. That's the condition. The buffer's the condition that the planning board has purview over. The actual construction of the pool and the construction of the sports court in and of themselves are not planning board issues. They're building permit issues. So they wouldn't be before you at all. The fact that there's a question there is why they're tied into this agreement to work out the Asbeld plan to show where they are, to make sure they haven't cut into the buffer zones. But the completion of those items aren't a planning board matter. The way this should have been done. Dave, you asked what's been happening for the last three years. Well, what's been happening is first the Mohanis were marketing the lot and then the Mohanis sold the lot to the Andersons and then the Andersons worked on their construction. The only time that Abby comes into the process is to grant the certificate of occupancy after the work is all done. She went out there to do the inspection only to find that the work was not all done. So that's that's why we are here where we are. It's not that someone was looking the other way. The trigger didn't happen until a request came for a certificate of occupancy.
Nora, just a point of order, though Rob made a statement, I want to make sure we correct it on the record. We're not looking to change the driveway. We're looking to enforce the conditions of the special permit, the original special permit on the driveway.
Exactly.
Yeah, correct. I'm saying you're changing it from as it's currently built.
Right. So this is a process that allows for funds to be put in place, allows that work to be done, allows the Andersons to continue living in the house while the work is done. That's all it is. Think of this, if this had been done properly, the special permit would have been signed off before the home was ready for occupancy. And the Andersons then would be free to come in and add a pool and add a sports court later to do earth material movement if they needed to do it after the fact. But not, it wouldn't have triggered any concerns about the special permit because the special permit would have been already completed, approved and signed off on. The only concern that would come into play that would affect the special permit at that point was the location of the sports court. So the Andersons believe that they haven't haven't gone into those buffers at all. We need the Asbeld to prove that. If that's the case, then that issue is resolved. If that's not the case, then there'll be restoration that's needed and there are sufficient funds allocated in the funding agreement that would cover that restoration. So I think
And who who would have handled the concerns of the abutters?
The concerns of the abutters for the sports court?
No, for the flooding.
For the flooding. For the flooding. So that would be, that would be done by the building commissioner. If fun, if flooding occurred due to the development of the lot, which is developed under a building permit, not under the special permit, then the building commissioner would address those concerns. If the flooding occurred due to the driveway construction and was related to the special permit, then the planning board would address those concerns. The reason we have a stormwater management approval process that was not followed here and that should have been, the reason we have that a process in the first place is to avoid situations where there's flooding to neighbors. If proper stormwater management procedures had been put in place, if they'd been approved by the conservation agent or the conservation commission, if there's extensive disruption of the land, those measures are designed and put in place before the construction is complete to make sure that the, the water is captured at the earliest possible stage and doesn't occur with flooding to neighbors.
So at the end of the day, we really wanna take care of this flooding issue.
Absolutely.
So that's, my concern is where it's before us, I wanna make sure that we take care of it.
Well, I believe the quickest way to take care of that is to get an earth, uh, to get a, a stormwater management application into the conservation agent at the soonest possible date. And you have the ability, if you vote to approve a process to go forward here, you have the ability to impose a condition with a deadline for submission of that application.
Okay.
And what is the nearest term submission deadline that is reasonable? Because I agree with Bill that we wanna try and get whatever we have in our control to help the abutters and, you know, get this addressed. And it sounds like, you know, this is something the Andersons wanna get addressed as well, so that everybody can go on living their lives happily in their homes.
I would say no later than October 2nd.
So we can make it feel like next Friday, you said, as you said?
Yes.
Yes.
So I think we should do that. And that, does that come back to us if it isn't, um, followed through?
Yes. So if, if the stormwater management application is not submitted by October 1st, then, then there would be no temporary certificate of occupancy that could be issued. So Abby will not issue, will not sign off to allow the building commissioner to issue a certificate of occupancy until that condition is followed through on. And until the funds are put in place in multiple, um, passbook accounts so that we can achieve the terms of the agreement.
So this is a very, it's a very tight timeline here. Then we're looking at, um, we're gonna, if we, if we have a condition to require that submission, October 2nd, then, and that includes temporary certificate of occupancy, then that's, they can, the fines stop and they can, they're okay. And then December 1st, right, is the, when it has to be done by, right? And what happens if, after December 1st, if things are not done, then, then we're back to the temporary? How is the, is the certificate of occupancy temporary until December 1st or what's, how does that play out?
So that's up to the building commissioner. The certificate of occupancy could expire on December 1st or it could be, um, of, there could be a longer date associated with it, with the understanding that the plan, that the town after December 1st could take the funds and cause the work to be completed. But in reality, work not completed by December 1st will not be completed until May or June at best. Um, so it's possible that the, the building commissioner would allow the certificate of occupancy to go a reasonable period of time to allow that work to be completed.
Right. Cause if they were, they were doing, if they were doing the work and it was close, then you wouldn't wanna just stop the process and then the town's not gonna be able to do it. So it used to be like another couple of weeks and we're done. Hopefully we have a warm December, but, um, okay.
Well, it was presented to the board earlier tonight that plans were already in the process of being done for stormwater management.
The, the end, uh, this is Brian. The engineer has been out there twice already. So I, I just, I would start the work tomorrow if I had the plan in my hand, but, um, the engineer needs to draw something that, uh, then I think needs to get reviewed uh, by the town and, uh, and then work to begin.
Well, I stated earlier that I had misgivings about going forward, but it's been, I believe, presented to me that this agreement is the best way to move forward in the fastest way possible for all parties involved. It's not perfect. There are holes that things could fall through, but I think there are always that situation um, with agreements. And so I would be in favor of all of the things that we talked about, uh, in terms of fi- finding the solution. Um, I do believe, uh, while the harm could be considered major for the, uh, the flooding, um, we looked at is the whole plan that this board looked at it three years ago. I believe as Abby indicated, as long as the driveway is put in the original position, the other things that we're talking about are in fact minor to the special permit that was issued three years ago. Uh, as I said before, the, the, the rainwater is major, but it's not part of this permit. Um, and it's, it's not something that you take into consideration when you think about major, minor modification. The, the change to the plans proposed tonight to my, to my mind appear to be minor.
The only question that I would have Chris to, to just give clarification on is the only other thing within our purview is the buffer that was talked about and, you know, what recourse do we have if we give this, um, permission tonight? Um, if, if the ASBIL comes back and there is, um, a significant modification to the buffer zone?
What I would recommend there is also require the submission of the ASBIL plan by a, a date certain. And if that ASBIL plan shows that there was incursion of the buffer zone, that any trees were actually cut within the buffer zone, then set a date certain for planting of replacement trees.
Nora, what if a pool is in the buffer zone?
I, I think we're confident the pool is not in the buffer zone. I don't think that, I don't, I don't think we're worried about that at all. I think the sports court is, is the um, questionable item that may be in the buffer zone and may also be, um, too close to the lot line to meet the setback requirements, but we won't know for sure until we see the ASBIL.
Okay.
And the general answer, if something's built in the buffer zone improperly, you can make them, yeah, you can make them remove it.
Any other board member thoughts? Do we have a sense of, does someone wanna make a motion to start this process or?
One last question, Dave. There's, there's no question as to the emergency easement road that goes out the back where, you know, that's not the issue where the, the driveway is going to be moved. It's the driveway down to Summer Street that is going to be moved. So.
It's, it's the place where the Anderson's driveway connects to the shared driveway. So right now it connects at the circle and the approved plans called for it to connect before you got to the circle. As you're going up the hill from Summer Street, before you get to the turnaround, the Anderson's driveway should come off the side of that shared driveway. So there's no proposed change to that. The, the proposal is for the Andersons to go back to the plan that was approved by the planning board and it was attached to their building permit that they were supposed to have complied with from the beginning. So the idea is that they'll go back to that. It will not affect the, um, emergency egress, the area on the other side of the circle. That won't be affected at all.
Right. Just, I'm just asking a clarifying question to make sure that there's, there's nothing related to the current driveway or the move, the movement of the driveway back to the original plan that is really a contributing factor to the stormwater thing. The stormwater is related to the actual development of the property site.
I imagine that's the case because the, the driveway that comes into the, uh, turnaround would have, the way it comes in now would have more likelihood of causing rainwater than having it come in further down the hill where it was supposed to come in in the first place. So I think by restoring the, um, Anderson's driveway to the place it should have been off of the shared driveway, you would remove impervious surface from further up, closer to the circle and therefore closer to the abutters. So you, you'd improve the situation by putting the driveway back where it's supposed to be. I'm not sure that that's what's causing the runoff though. I think the runoff is being caused by greater impervious surface on the Anderson's lot than was considered at the time of their drainage management plans, which were never approved by the town, never submitted for approval.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. I'm, I'm looking at the procedurally kind of what's involved here. And so just as we have in our notes, um, there's an initial determination that we'd have to make that, um, about the, that it's a minor modification. And then we have a couple of suggested motions to um, implement what we've all, what we've been talking about as a agreement, basically to, um, approve the, the minor modification, um, and to allow temporary occupancy. Um, but with all the conditions, with the conditions that they, um, uh, get the stormwater application submitted by October 2nd. Um, and that the ASBIL plan is available. We, do we have a hard date on that as well?
I'd say October 2nd.
Abby, can you create a list of conditions so we make sure we get them right in the motion? Or just, I don't know, we have two of them, the ASBIL and the, I just wanna make sure that we've, we get everything that we've talked about.
Yeah, I would, I would say the ASBIL and the stormwater management plan along with the final executed agreement, um, by, and funds by October 2nd.
And I'd add to that, if the, if the ASBIL plan shows any disturbance of the buffer area, uh, you'd require the replacement of trees by, I, I would, I encourage doing that in the spring. Um, not now, so maybe, but maybe by May 1st.
All right, um, so I think we have kind of a draft idea for a motion there. I do notice that, um, the abutters have raised their hands and have been patiently, uh, waiting. So I would think I would like to hear from the abutters briefly, if you could kind of, if you could make your comments like a minute or two, three. Um, and I'll just, I don't know who raised their hand first, so I will ask, um, Mr. Tofaloni to go first. And I'm sure you're, may unmute you.
Thank you very much. First of all, I would like to thank the entire board, Abby and Nora for everything that you've, um, explained. And I do agree with Chris that, and, and I'm more than willing to, to help be part of the solution, to help things out. I do have a couple of questions because of what, what's at hand right now. And, and I do think one thing too, that the town, even regarding whatever it's doing about finding, needs to take something into consideration for the Andersons. They are a family. They do have children and we do have a pandemic going on. So they are in a bit of a unique situation and as a family person, um, and my wife and I have spoken about this, we feel for them. So whatever can be done to help their cause is, is, is important. It's an important thing and it might be outside of what we're talking about. But just a quick question, because of the issue with the drainage and I'm, I, you know, I'm understanding Brian that you're, you have this in the works. Is it possible to put a temporary measure up there to prevent the water from going down there while the permanent solution is being added? I mean, maybe something like putting an impervious earthen berm across that driveway and across that area to, it, it'll block the driveway for the time being, but they could put a sump in there and maybe they can pump into a tank if need be, but at least it would prevent that problem and might help the Andersons' cause on, on trying to be able to live in their house as early as possible. I know there are other factors, but we do have a pandemic and there are children involved. And I do think that's, we need to try to work together for a solution and I'm happy to spend any time I can with, with anybody to try to help because I am in the business. So, and I'm willing to try to help however I can.
I, I would just like to speak to that because he asked me the question. Thank you, Joe. So I, my engineer, when he first came out, uh, when we first, uh, thought this was an issue a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, um, said, in, in, which is the reason that we did it was to put the, um, the swale in with the crush, you know, dig out, dig a trench at that spot and put this crushed stone in. Um, and he thought that coupled with the fact that before we had done that, the lot was just raw. There was no turf or anything down. So it was just, he thought just rolling off of kind of that, that spot. But again, I heard earlier that I shouldn't have done that because I didn't talk to anybody about that. So I'm happy to do anything, uh, you know, in the meantime, before the drainage plan is finalized and approved and then the work be, you know, beginning. But, um, I would obviously want, uh, Abby or someone to, you know, give me the go ahead to do that. Cause that's what I attempted to do once, um, you know, once we had, we dug that, the swale with the crushed stone.
Right. But the problem that they're having is, is the water going down there. So although it was a good idea to try to do something, what the swale did was it, it's, it accelerates the flow of water down there. Cause now the water runs off your grass, has a channel to go and it pushes it down by the driveway. So, so maybe you can berm up that area so that, I mean, it, it's gonna be a bit of an inconvenience for you because you're gonna have water that might pool up on, on your property or on the Mahanis' property. But at least the thing the berm might do is, is stop the water from going down into the Gillis's and really the one with the biggest problem is, is, is Scotty Cochran because the wa- she's on the low side of the driveway and it goes down there. So maybe there's something temporary that can be done. It will help the process while the permanent solution is being developed so that you can mitigate the issue that, that those two abutters are having right now. Help you out as far as your need to get, you know, to legalize your occupancy and have a home for your children and your wife. And then move forward on the other thing because, you know, October 2nd's a way, a ways away. And as Chris said, we all need to be part of the solution, uh, you know, to try to help fix or change or do whatever needs to be done to try to make this happen and work for everybody.
I'm happy to do any mitigate, temporary mitigation, um, efforts to, you know, it was never, uh, my or my wife's intention to build this house and, um, and have any negative consequences for the neighbors that are, um, you know, down below us.
Thanks. Ms. Cochran, did you wanna?
Hi. So, um, can we be part like privy and part of the, um, remedy for, can we be in the meetings for, um, trying to resolve the water issue? And hear what the plans are and how they're gonna fix it?
The first step in the, in the stormwater management is the submission of the application. Once the application's received, we'll know what the process is. If it's an application that's just an administrative review, that will be just considered by the conservation agent who considers all the minor stormwater management approvals in town and approves the plan. If it's determined to require a full stormwater management permit, then that would be sent to the conservation commission and all the abutters would be notified and invited to attend the meeting of the conservation commission to review that plan. But I, we won't know until we see the plan.
Right. And, but do we give to, you know, be a part of the solution of how to, you know, to remedy the situation?
So the, the solution will be proposed by the Anderson's engineer and then be reviewed by the conservation agent to see if it's suitable and be reviewed by the town engineer. And the, the plan, um, when it's approved, if it's a, if it's an administrative approval, the plan will be shared with all the abutters. And the, the, there can be an explanation by the Anderson's engineer of why they believe it would be the success, most successful way of, of handling the stormwater management. If it has to go before the conservation commission, then the plan would be described to the conservation commission. You would be welcome to attend the meeting at which it's described and to have input into that discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
One last thing I'd like to say is, you know, in our original engineering, uh, plan or, you know, a plan that was submitted, um, as part of stormwater management, um, the engineer put, in, we installed, uh, on, on a couple of different spots on the site. Um, I think it's 12 total six foot cul-de-sacs, um, to deal with any water that was gonna, you know, come off the house because we knew the house was a, was a good sized house. So it wasn't, I didn't want anybody to get the impression that we ignored, um, stormwater management. I mean, we put, um, 12 chambers into that lot. Um, it's just this one spot in the back rear, um, that is seeming to cause the, the issue, but, um, by no means did we ignore that issue.
Yeah, no, no, the water, I mean, it comes down like pretty much from the top of the driveway. Um, and that's like, it starts there and then any, since, you know, the grading was raised, anything like kinda just flows onto the driveway and that driveway is just acting like. And that driveway is just acting like a slide all the way down to Westfield Street.
Am I muted? Oh, okay. One, one thing to take into consideration is, we all have to realize one thing, the, the Andersons were not part of the special permit process. They weren't around. And, and one thing that did happen for, for the original applicant, the special permit did waive the requirement for a stormwater report. So now the, and, you know, that was waived in the special permit. Now, it is an issue which has to be taken care of, but we also have to take that into consideration for the Andersons because they're kind of getting stuck with something that they really, that they really weren't part of, and that really, it wasn't a requirement based on the special permit. I mean, the i- issue has to be taken care of, but, you know, there's got to be some consideration given with, because there are some, there are some factors that, that are, you know, that are going to affect them and their family that, you know, that needs to be taken into a consideration as well.
I want to get back again to the idea of what's included in the special permit for the shared driveway and what's not. The reason the planning board waived the stormwater approval for the special permit for the shared driveway was that the driveway was in existing condition and that they were improving that existing condition by requiring a hydrant and a gate and signage and requiring, um, expansion of the width of, of the driveway for safety reasons, but doing it with pervious surfaces, not impervious. So they were, the requirement is that they, rather than pave a full-width site drive, the site drive exists as it was previously in place. And the extension is through pavers or, uh, gravel strips on either side of it. So the planning board determined at that time that the changes that were related to the special permit for the shared driveway did not give rise to the need for stormwater management. What's giving rise to the need for stormwater management is the development of the first of the two new lots. So the Andersons' lot requires stormwater management review. And all buildings in Westwood that disturb more than 5,000 square feet require a stormwater management administrative approval before construction. For some reason, that was not done. Um, the assumption that was, um, made to the building commissioner at the time of the issuance of the building permit was that there would be disturbance of less than 5,000 square feet. We now know that's not the case, so maybe the plans evolved over time. And the disturbance is clearly greater than 5,000 square feet and maybe greater than a half an acre. So we're waiting to see what that is. The stormwater management issues, the problems that we're seeing are related to the development of the Andersons' lot, not related to the development of the shared driveway. It could be that the location of the Andersons' driveway, where it connects to the shared driveway, exacerbates those problems. We'll find that out when we see the plan that's put forward. And we know now that that's, that, where that Andersons' driveway comes in is going to be changed. It's going to be put back the way it should have been originally, further down the driveway, and hopefully that will alleviate some of the drainage concerns by having water that does sheet off that driveway, which hopefully will be very limited in nature. But what water does come off should come down the driveway towards Summer Street rather than over the hill in the other direction.
Well, the driveway is acting as the conduit to carry the water, but the water that's coming onto that driveway is also coming from 480. Because they, they changed the grading on, on that lot coming into the driveway. Super helpful would be next rainstorm is to get, get people out there and you can actually observe what's going on with the water. So, um, you know, to try to, try to alleviate the problem.
I'm willing to meet anybody out there when it's raining to see exactly, you know, even with the engineer, I don't know if we could coordinate that, but.
There's one other hand raised. Mr. Gillis, did you have some last comments?
Very briefly, uh, like the other neighbors, Mr. Anderson, would love to assist you. As I said earlier, our kids seem to be the same age from what I can see from my driveway. And so, uh, we hope they become good friends. Obviously, some of the frustration here is the fact that the, um, abutters who have been aggrieved for not being part of the process. And as you can see, Scotty, my wife and I, and Joe would all love to assist you in coming to a solution and meeting with you for that. For the record though, this is a major modification. And for the record, this is not an issue for the town. I alerted the town of this in October of 2018. The town sent emails to Scotty and May saying they're already working to address this issue. Uh, it's not something that just came up recently. It's been going onward for two years. And that's part of the frustration because, as, uh, one of the board members said there, you know, come December 1st, you know, with there being ice out there, it's a short time now, but it's a short time because it hasn't been addressed for the past two years. So we want to see something put in place, even if it's temporary. I think the idea of a berm is a very good idea to, to at least block the water for the winter. Because it's, uh, it's an incredible safety hazard. Uh, people could get hurt. And, um, it's an issue that's been there over two years now. And, uh, while there's a short window, sure, it is a short window, but it's a short window because the resolution hasn't been done in the last two years.
Thanks, Mr. Gillis.
Really what we want is everybody to be put whole as quickly as possible. And if we can help, I think we should do it.
So it sounds like the, the way we can help best, based on what I'm hearing from Nora and Abby, is to give the approval for this with the conditions that Abby will note. So that they, there is stormwater, um, plan and the as-built plan filed by October 2nd. So that we can then allow the other departments, building department, conservation, to do their jobs to, to get the remediation done. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Would a board member like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the, approval of the.
Do the finding of the minor versus major?
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, to, to the first, the first motion should be, um, to consider the request for a temporary occupancy, while the work is continuing to progress. Is, is that minor?
I think, Abby, I think you have to make a determination that this is minor modification. Uh, uh, not, not a, a change in the special permit.
Yeah, that's, well, that's lumping, what she suggested was lumping two things into one.
Okay.
Sound like. So I would make a motion that, uh, we find that the changes presented to the board in this application be considered minor to the special permit issued in, um, 2017.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay, there's a motion from Mr. Path and a second from Mr. Gotti. Is there any further discussion?
So we're only referring to the driveway, correct?
The special permit, I think, which, which really only dealt with the driveway, right, Abby?
Right, the 2017 approval was of the driveway. So the, the change really is the process.
Right.
Change.
That we're allowing a temporary COO instead of a permanent, once it was all done. That's the change requested.
And, and it's, this part of it is to say that we don't need to go to a full public hearing to, um, have a, to open everything up and have a, I mean, to have another public hearing on, uh, the special permit process that these changes denied are fit within a minor modification.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Then I will call for a vote. Mr. Path?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Conant?
Yes.
Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. So that's finding that we can now proceed to the motions on the substance of this issue. Abby, do you want to? Is it two separate motions?
Um, let me think.
Why don't we do one?
I think you should, I think you should break them down as specifically as you can, so that they're clear on the record in case we have issues later on. So I think the next thing would be to direct the Andersons to file a, um, uh, a, a, as-built drawings by next Friday, October 2nd, 2020. A, as part of a perhaps temporary certificate of occupancy.
Do we include the stormwater management in that as well?
I think you want to do that next. I, I'm trying to, Ms. Conant, I'm trying to break them down so that the record's clear of what you're voting and when.
Okay.
All right.
Pat, would it be possible to have a motion with individual parts? So, um, a motion to?
That's fine. And if you want to do that, that's fine, as long as you delineate the parts specifically so that they're taken in the minutes, in case we have to refer to them later on.
When you say parts, you're talking about the conditions we discussed.
Correct. So, let, let me see if, uh, if I lay this out and if one of the board members wants to make a motion, you, see if this would be appropriate.
And you can do that by simple, hold on Nora. If you like the way she lays this out, and I'm going to listen too. She can lay it out, you can say, so moved. And then you can go to a second.
So I'm recommending that the planning board make a motion to, uh, grant the town planner the necessary flexibility to allow for a temporary certificate of occupancy to be issued if all other approvals by other boards are in order or in process. If the applicant submits a stormwater management plan application to the conservation agent on or before October 2nd. So that would be the first condition. The second condition be if the applicant submits an as-built plan showing the development of the lot on or before October 2nd. And as a third condition, in the event that that as-built plan shows that there was disturbance to any of the no-cut buffer zones shown on the special permit plan, that the applicant install, um, new plantings of sufficient size and spacing to fill the gap that was created by the disturbance and that those plantings be planted no later than March 1st, 2001. And also to allow Abby to work with the Mohan's and the Andersons on the development of an appropriate agreement. And then another condition that the, um, that agreement will call for the establishment of past book savings accounts in appropriate amounts to correspond to the beta estimate. And that those past book savings accounts be fully funded and submitted to town council with signed withdrawal slips prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy.
One clarification, Nora. You mentioned, you said March 1st. Did you mean May 1st?
I'm sorry, May 1st, yes, sorry, May 1st of 2021.
Right. Yeah, because you had said 2001, so yes.
Yes, sorry about that. Did I miss anything, Pat, or is?
No, I think, I think that's pretty good.
Are we adding in, this is Attorney Jacobs for the Mohan's, are we adding in there something that as part of the agreement that they restore their private lot driveway to the special permit, uh, location off of the shared driveway below the turnaround?
So, so I think that the board is not granting any changes to the special permit plans. And so the, the as-built plan, and stormwater management plan would have to take into consideration the correct allocation of the, of the driveway, the correct location. So that, I, I'm not sure that needs to be in the motion. I think that needs to be in the agreement. Because the planning board is not granting any changes. They're allowing for the special permit plan to go forward as, as designed and approved. Perhaps you could add to the motion that, that this flexibility shall not include any changes to the, um, to the plan for the driveway itself as approved in 2017.
Yeah, I think that's, I think having that, because it was the per, you have the amount of the money and all in there, but it didn't say exactly explicitly that that's to cause the, what's being constructed to conform to the plans as.
But there's also, there's also no vote to change the special permit, Dave. So where it's silent, it carries. But that's okay. It's now part of the motion if someone wants to say so moved.
Now, how do we know that this will make the abutters whole?
So, so I think that with, with respect to the stormwater management issue, that can only be addressed once the plan is received. So the plan to be received has to be reviewed by the conservation agent, possibly by the Conservation Commission and by the town engineer. And we will not know if the proper implementation of that has been done, or if more work is needed until we see that plan in hand. But I, but I think that's a separate issue. So that, I'm trying to remind you that that's part of the development of the lot as opposed to the development of the driveway. I think by requiring that the driveway be constructed as approved, not having the Andersons' driveway come in above the circle, but having it come in below the circle, I think that corrects some of the drainage issues. The rest of the drainage issues are related to how that lot was developed. And, and it would appear that there were not a sufficient number or, or volume of cul-de-sacs that were put into place. So that has to be addressed through the stormwater management plan. You're calling for that plan to come in as part of this agreement here, but that plan will be reviewed by another body.
And, and there's no way of enforcing to make sure that the abutters' concerns are taken care of?
So the, the butters. If that, if that stormwater management plan requires Conservation Commission approval, the abutters' concerns will be addressed at the Conservation Commission level. If it requires only an administrative approval, then they will have recourse. If the conservation agent approves a plan that's not satisfactory, then the abutters will have an opportunity to, to, um, take an appeal of that decision, of the conservation agent's decision to the zoning board. So there are other boards that would be involved if the plans are not approved and properly carried out. But I don't believe the stormwater management for the lot itself is part of the planning board's concern. You're causing it to be brought to the forefront and being taken care of through this motion. But you're not approving that plan.
Mr. Delay, it's admirable that you'd like to make all the stormwater problems go away tonight. We, in the words of the great person from Maine, we just can't get there from here tonight.
Okay, well, I, I just feel bad that it may have started with us.
I, I understand the dynamic. We're rolling as fast as we can.
Okay, I think we have, we have a, a motion out there, or we have, we have the, someone can say, so moved.
So moved.
Who was that? Was that Mr. Gotti or?
Mr. Gotti.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Gotti.
I will second him.
Seconded by Mr. Path. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll have a, seeing none, we will have a roll call vote. Mr. Path?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Conant?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So the, that's, that's granted. And I believe, are there any further items to discuss on this issue? And I, and I thank everyone. I really appreciate the, this took a long time, but I think that this is the kind of thing we're here to do. Hopefully this is going to make a difference. And, um, you know, we'll keep an eye on things too, but we, I think this is, um, I really appreciate the effort of everybody in this discussion.
Can I please ask just one question?
Yes.
We've been living here for 15 years and the gate is made out of wood down by the Gilson house. And never had a problem with it. Just right now, I got rotten the whole gate. So if we have water problem from the driveway, how do we leave it till April to have the driveway done? We, I'm really having a hard time here. Every time car comes into his house, the light shine right into our family room where we sit on a couch. I mean, it's going to be like three years. And is there any money in the escrow for the driveway?
Yes. There's money in the escrow for the driveway to construct the driveway in accordance with the original approval.
Okay.
The date when the driveway would get constructed is not being discussed in this motion. That's part of the agreement between the Andersons and the Mohandas. So that the dates that are in that agreement are still subject to you two parties working out the details of that agreement before we can issue the temporary certificate of occupancy. The word, the planning board today is doing is setting a date for submission of the stormwater management plan, for submission of the as-built plan, and if necessary for planting of trees. The agreement that has to come forward between the Andersons and the Mohandas would set the date for when the driveway has to be constructed. And I am of the opinion that it should be done before the end of December.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then we will, we will move on in our agenda. So the remaining items on the agenda, the next item is 166 East Street, the Norfolk Golf Club. And that, that's our last public hearing item this evening. So in this, in this issue, we have two board members who are planning to recuse themselves from this application. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to temporarily appoint our associate board members to fill the place of the two board members, Ms. Conant and Mr. Path, who are going to recuse themselves. I'm going to call associate member Steve Olunoff and Steve Raski to sit on this, on just this application as voting board members, because in an application like this, we need the full, we need to have the full five-member voting board to be present. So I believe Abby, you're going to promote them into the, to make them panelists and Debbie and Chris will be are recusing, recusing themselves. Is that clear? Let me see.
All right.
I think we can, let's see, we've got, is everyone here for this? We probably move the Mohandas and
Oh, yeah.
So they don't need to be. And then I assume the other people are attorneys. Yep. All right, so let's, we'll begin this with presentation. If the applicant is ready to proceed, introduce yourself and start.
Hi, good evening. My name's Sean Sweeney, I live on 217 Washington Street, but I am the applicant for this EIDR as a member of Norfolk Golf Club. A couple of people I'd like to invite into the meeting, Abby, if you could, is the president of Norfolk Golf Club, Steve Moreno, you see him out there?
Okay.
As well as Paul Bullier, who's our architect.
Okay.
You know, Steve would like to address the group first, if he may.
Good evening. My name is Steve Moreno, I'm the president of Norfolk Golf Club. On behalf of Norfolk Golf Club and its members, I would like to extend our appreciation for your view and consideration of our renovation proposal to our existing clubhouse at 166 East Street in Westwood. Our current clubhouse was constructed over 30 years ago and our membership feels that it's time for us to make some much-needed improvements. Many of these improvements that we are proposing will be interior. The exterior improvements that we will be making to the building will make it much more functional and will include minimal changes to our existing footprint. The Norfolk Golf Club has a longstanding mutually beneficial relationship with the town of Westwood over the years. Our membership is made up of many Westwood residents as well as many members from the surrounding towns. We feel that the improvements that we're looking to make will make Norfolk Golf Club a much better place for for all future members and applicants and people that want to come in and join Norfolk. So thank you for your time and Sean will do any details on the specifics.
Thank you, Steve. So as Steve said, this, this building, for those that might know a little bit of the history, had burnt down in the late eighties and was rebuilt in 1989, with the exception of the Pro Shop, which is a small building that actually didn't, was not engulfed in the fire. This process started at the club, just real quick to give you some background, as deferred maintenance issue, we wanted to look at the building itself, its mechanical systems, its structure, everything from vinyl siding to windows. And we started just to look at the building and what it needed as far as support from us in regards to maintenance or repair projects. What you, what you have before tonight is a plan that we believe does just that. It replaces windows, siding, the roofing. It does work on the deck, which we'll talk about briefly, the deck that surrounds the side of the building as well as the back. Maybe Abby, maybe if you could pull up the plans and specifically page A2, may help the board.
Just pulling them up now, just takes a minute.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
So the architectural drawings, A2?
Oh, shoot. Um.
You don't have them?
Okay, I don't have, I can
That's fine, we can look at this page, if you can go back one.
To this one?
Yep, and just zoom into where the structure is. Thank you. So you can see the existing club, the existing clubhouse. She's scrolling over.
All right.
That's okay, not a problem. So the existing clubhouse now is, the parking is out on East Street and it's fed by a walkway that then walks towards the main clubhouse. Currently, there's a walkway where it says paver walk that goes up to the front entrance of the existing building. And there's a step up onto the deck that faces out towards the ninth green. And then wraps around the backside where she's pointing now, which is facing the fifth fairway. So the intent of the work that we're trying, we want to do out on the deck is a deck that faces the ninth green. Currently has a canvas-type roof over it. We'd like to replace that with a solid deck roof. And we would like to take that roof then and wrap it around the deck that currently does not have a cover and install a hard roof over that deck as well. The other kind of exterior changes is the kitchen that's located on, we'll call it the main level. Brings their trash out to the lower level. And it's a big process for them now. We would like to have a stair that goes from the main level deck down to the paved area, which is the area, Abby, that you could show where the catch basin is located. Just north of where you are, yep, right, right up there in the paved area. And then
Okay.
That would allow, that would allow people to excuse me, Siri somehow locked in. So that, that area will just be able to bring trash around to the front. We're also looking to extend the deck about two feet on the fifth fairway side and three feet on the ninth green side, simply to for flow. We just feel we use the deck that as far as waiter and waitress service is sometimes impeded by people on the deck and this would just give a better flow. One thing that is important to note is, you know, this renovation is basically deferred maintenance with some upgrades. We, we're trying to make it, actually, the other issue I want to just point your attention is on the front paver walk. The entrance to the clubhouse itself is a little bit unclear. We have people that come to the clubhouse and can't find the front door. And so as you'll notice in part of the architectural plans, we're changing the walkway and the main entrance, meaning just swinging the door from facing the ninth green to facing the parking lot to allow better access. And we're also looking then to provide handicap access as well in that area. So you know, it's a good amount of work from a renovation standpoint. Majority of the work is renovating the interior of the clubhouse itself, just upgrading aesthetics, paint. Part of the job is we have an existing bar that is in a straight line and we're, which we want to just relocate it within the space and make it a U-shaped bar. But in, in reality, from the outside, the entrances, the exits, the lighting that we have currently will be updated, but they'll pretty much, the lumens and the areas to be lit are going to remain the same. We, we asked for a few waivers. Waivers in regards to, you'll see them as part of the package. We did look at the stormwater because we are increasing the impervious area slightly with the deck that faces the fifth fairway. But North Engineering who went out and viewed it thought there was de minimis amount of added stormwater runoff compared to the rest of the golf course. We did get notification from your contracted engineer that they would like to see a site plan with more information that was provided with the architectural set. Specifically, they wanted to see some contours around the front as opposed to spot elevations, which we don't have a problem with. They requested that we show the entrance of utilities from East Street to the building, which we're going to remain, but they wanted to see it located on the plan. They asked for a kind of logistical plan, which I did upload and hopefully you have in your package now. Commonwealth builders provided that and we uploaded that to the site. And then the last thing they asked for was just some understanding of the landscaping that's going to be effective at the front of the building in regards to the walkways. So we, with the timing of getting that last week, unfortunately, weren't able to get that done for this meeting. But we asked that if the planning board sees so fit to approve our application tonight, that they would make that a condition that we supply that. At this time, I welcome any questions from the board.
Thank you. Are there, Abby, are there staff comments that you want to bring up?
Well, I guess just in response to the landscaping question, was there any landscaping being removed with the proposal?
The landscaping and the front entrance was going to be removed simply in the fact that replaced with items that weren't as overgrown, just basic, basic maintenance, let's call it, where the landscape area is not going to change in size. It's going to change a little bit in dimensions because of the hardscaping, but the intent is to replace all the landscaping in the front.
Okay, that would be my recommendation that any, any landscape plantings that are removed would be required to be new, new ones planted around the new, the new area. We did circulate to other staff members, no other major comments. If there's any changes to the alcohol service area, that would need to get a license from that from the select board. Other than that, there was no other outstanding staff comments other than Beta's request for just some more complete site plan.
I did note, Abby, there's a positive comment, but from the Commission on Disabilities, that there's, pleased to see that the plans will improve physical access to the club. And so I do like to see anything when there's, when work's being done that, you know, any effort that can be done to improve access is always welcome. Are there any board members with questions? We can go, I want to go around, I'll, I'll ask you individually and then we'll start with Mr. Delay.
I had to unmute myself, but the plan looks fine to me. The golf course has always looked great and I think it's a great asset in Westwood, so I don't see anything that's going to detract from that.
Thanks, Mr. Gotti.
No, I had no questions. I read through the plan, I read through the staff comments and Beta's comments and, you know, with the conditions that, you know, Abby already noted, I'm totally fine with this.
Mr. Olunoff?
Well, I do have a few things. Getting back to the landscaping. Normally we require a landscaping plan, so then should we add to the waiver, a waiver from the requirement for landscaping plan? Should we do that, Abby?
Yeah, yeah, I guess so. They did provide a plan, but it didn't specifically include the planting details of Planting Legends. Yeah.
So we should do that. All right, and while we're still on the waivers, they asked for a waiver on the earth material movement, which is actually not necessary because you've demonstrated that there is no significant earth material movement. So that's just not required, but you can't just really grant a waiver for that, it's not necessary. On the yeah, I would like to go over, and on the accessibility, so the commission there did ask a few questions about how accessible it was. So is the front door totally accessible now?
Yes, yes, it is. So there'll be this, there's, on the front, there's basically two accessible pathways into the building now. There's, there'd be a entrance that's at the, you know, proper slope to go into the front door, which is accessible. And there's also a ramp that's over towards the deck, which would be accessible. So, you know, part of our, our issue was, you know, our members vary in age, as you can imagine, and so having it accessible not only from a wheelchair perspective, but just with people with limited mobility is an important aspect of it that we wanted to make sure that our members would have as well as guests.
Yeah, so it looked like you added that ramp because it doesn't, the, on the first page of the, of your plans there's a rendering of what it looked like and it doesn't, it seemed to show that the pathway would go right up.
Yeah, there was a comment actually by the building commissioner, Joe Doyle, about that. He asked that same question. The schematic was done early on when we were doing kind of understanding the needs and presenting to the membership. But the plans as drawn that show the accessible ability and the sloped walkways is what, you know, what will be submitted to the building. And, and we actually, we commented in, in the portal as well on that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, one thing I always like and I like, appreciate this plan, shows where the sidewalks meet, you have nice curves rather than straight angles between the sidewalks. But when you put in that ramp there, you could have added them at the point where, where that ramp meets the sidewalk at 90 degrees, you could have curved those two. You see where I'm
I understood. One of our, Christopher Jones is a member and also a landscape architect. He's on the call as well. Chris, do you want to just, Abby, if you could just let Chris Jones in, he could probably speak to that more directly.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Chris.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, we, we actually, I appreciate the comment about the curves at the radius, the radius conditions because it definitely makes the movements work better. We were really struggling with making the grades work from point A to point B. And every time we had a curve, curve, those conditions basically expand the dimension of the landing zone. And at that one condition, we were so tight to make the grades work to get in the front door that we chose not to put a curve at that connection to the walkway to the deck, which is the reason it's not in that one condition. And I just also, I'm glad you let me on because that actually is not a ramp, it's just a sloped walk, accessible walkway at under 5%. So it doesn't have any rail requirements. But we, my preference would have been to put the ramp and, or the curves in that condition, but we just really want to make sure we stayed under 5% to both the front door and the deck. And that's why in that one location it wasn't there, Steve.
So when you come down that slope and you make So when you come down that slope and you make a top left. And then it meets the sidewalk in ninety degrees, could you put little curves around off?
Yes, maybe we could round those off with like a foot, a one-foot radius or something like that, and um and um. And we are going to plant that front edge with some some low evergreens to to sort of sort of control the movements in that space as well.
Alright, so so it will now be accessible for all the uh the members of the club, what about the employees of? Uh, into and out of the kitchen and things like that, would would the rest of the uh building be accessible?
Yeah, so the building right now, when you do get into that front door, then the kitchen is on the same level. Um, but we also have a Lula lift um that will bring people from the main level down to the lower level that has been existing, it's been in the club.
Mm-hmm, so effectively the whole entire building will be accessible?
Yes.
Very good, uh, so that's exactly what we we like to see. Uh, so on the drainage, because you didn't put in the topography, it was hard to tell. I just wondering the the drainage on the on the two new sidewalks there and where where the water from that is going. Because that, I guess that that would be the big change and just a concern, there's there's a flowing out towards the street, it's a long distance off, but. Uh, where does that water go?
Yep, so the sidewalks now currently, and I'll have Chris a- add to this, but I'm a civil engineer, so I'll talk about the drainage. Um, currently, the walkway is now draining to the landscape areas that are adjacent to them. Um, they're they're pitched that way and that's the way they drain, um, the walkway. Um, it actually has a slope from left to right if you're heading in from the um parking lot. Um, which then, you know, being a golf course, we love to absorb any water we can, so um that would just contributes to that fourth fairway. And then that wouldn't change that, there's no intention to change that walkway that leads from the parking lot to um the clubhouse itself.
Okay, so here's where I have a few problems. Uh, you're asking for a waiver on the lighting. And 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 granted, you know, this is not the situation where you you would even need a photometric plan. However, it's still not clear uh what all the lighting is and and I found a few. It took me a long time to find some of the lighting on on the plan, uh.
So the lighting, I I can talk about the lighting generally if it helps.
Yeah.
Um, so the the lighting uh by by code at all. Uh, en- entries and it and exits um is there today and it will change, you'll have new fixtures, but it will continue to be as it is. Um, the current main deck um has lighting underneath that lights that deck and the intention is to um replace that with LED high efficient lighting.
Those are recessed lightings in the ceiling?
Um, we're right now, we're we're going back and forth just internally, whether they're going to be recessed or whether they're going to be mounted like on a. Possibly a um paddle fan, but the intent is we don't want to throw a lot of light on the deck, members tend to. Quite frankly, the sometimes there's candles on the tables and there's no light lighting on at all, so it's not a um a task lighting issue, it's actually more of a. Ambiance, and so um we're not envisioning a lot of lighting on that deck per se, or the deck that faces the fifth airway.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I've been out there and and it's not very well lit, uh, which is good in the sense that. This is a nice area like way out there, so you can get the spot. This is a place where you can actually see the sky, see the stars, which is really hard to find any place like that nowadays. So I don't, wouldn't want you to introduce a lot of light here. Uh, so I'm mostly concerned about, again, that those two walkways and there is a pole lamp, but nowhere do you show on the plan. Where that's located and would that be sufficient to light those two sidewalks to get down to the straight. Uh sidewalk that currently just goes directly to the parking lot.
Uh, Chris, do you want to answer that?
Um, the existing condition has a uh light adjacent to the connection of the existing walk to the main walk and we will have an uh. A new light in that same location, plus the lighting that is on the building, uh, the. The entry lighting, I think we have um sconce lightings on on the outside of the building at the main entry. And the combination of those, I think we felt was was adequate lighting to get you from point A to point B, which is consistent with what we have today.
Okay, you should you should locate those on the plan.
Sure, we can do that.
And you can see that, also, the staircase in the back, there's no apparent lighting for that. And again, selling stairs, we want to have them adequately lit, so uh, there's no indication of what you have there.
So there is a sk- a wall sconce outside that door, but you're right, that's a, you know, long um stretch of stairs, um, so we may have to add some lighting. Um, either tread lighting or something to that effect for safety.
Yeah, so indicate, you know, what that is and and see if you can put it on the plan, there are two problematic lights, though. Uh. Right now, there are a couple of spotlights, I think it looks like there are two in the back of the building. And from the plans, it took me a while to locate them, but it looks like one on the uh left side of the building. Uh. And then one to the rear of the building and it's uh. You have a labeled LT ten. And uh those are look appear to be large spotlights. So I just want to call your attention, uh, designing by a six point four point six. That spotlights aren't to be to be mounted any higher than fifteen feet above the ground. Uh, these would definitely be uh be in violation of that. Uh, and so we like to get away from spotlights to begin with, so could you replace those spotlights with lower level lights that? Uh. That would work but not not just throw a mass of light out into the.
Yeah, I I I think we can work with that, I just, I'm not sure um whether or not those are existing lights that we were just simply relamping. Um, if they were existing, are they okay to just relamp with LEDs?
Yeah, uh, no, I mean, they're they're effectively new lights. So uh you you really have to bring them into conformity with with the regulations, which is uh the fifteen-foot. Height limitation and uh, and so I think, you know, you should work on that, get rid of those, you have them up. They're almost hard to find, uh, took took me a while, but because I actually wasn't looking that high up, but. There were, I they're up high in the gables, it's uh, let me see, um. Uh, A six A. I can get, but they're up there on on those gables where they shouldn't be.
Well, that's if that's the regulation and it if it's showing for new lights, um, we can definitely, you know, um, make that happen.
Yeah, so so get rid of those spotlights and and put something else up that, you know, that the lights up the area, but you know. Uh, sconce type lights are preferred to, you know, spotlight, so uh, if you could do that, that would be great. And and given that, if you can put those in the plans, then I I think we can, you know, grant the waiver for the photometrics. The uh, just make sure that, you know, we really need to know what what the exterior lights are going to be and 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 where the. You're going to be shining. And and these are going to be LED lights, I take it?
They are, yes.
Yeah.
Even to chime in on the lights, I I didn't want to cut you off, um, those lights, a probably the architects, by the way. Those lights are for the um gable end signage, they're not lights that are shining down on the um.
Oh.
On the landscape or on the deck, they're for the Norfolk Golf Club signs that go on each gable line.
Okay.
They're strictly signage lights, they're little goose neck lights for the signage.
Alright, so they're not real bright lights, I did, those were not, that you didn't list the water zone, though, you listed the temperature, but.
I know, I I just saw that when you said it, trust me, it's on my list, but that was, that's what those are for.
Alright, so make sure there are no spotlights, just have those sconce lights and those, and those two are okay, because they're just lighting up the sign. Which you do, which as long as they, you know, meet our regulations, then that's good, that's fine. Alright, I think.
That was the intention, thank you, sir.
Alright, thanks, um, Mr. Raffsky, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, good evening, I just have, I'll keep it short, um. First, I think uh Mr. Doyle had a question about whether it's ramps or steps going up to the deck. And has that been cleared up?
Yes, I think we uh we answered that earlier, so and um it's the steps that are shown on the um. Plans are what's going to be um part of the project. Um, and the accessible entrance is in the front door. And then there's a walking ramp that goes uh from the pathways or walkways up into the main deck area. And we've we've actually, um, Paul, who's on the call, did speak to Joe directly and we have commented on the portal.
Alright, so the plan has been clarified, Abby?
I didn't see the updated um, an updated plan yet.
No, no, so we submit for building permit, we will, um, you will have the updated plan.
So we we should just make sure that what we're proving, if we do approve it, does recognize that that discrepancy has been addressed. Uh, and the only other comment, because my Steve, I I had a couple of other things, but Steve did cover them, Mr. Olunoff, but. Um, if we are going to grant the waiver of the landscaping, uh, maybe this is for Mr. Ahern, I think it shouldn't just be. Uh, that you replace it, but it's done at a a level satisfactory to the town planner or brought back to the planning board.
Pat, you're muted.
I'm sorry, Mr. Raski, you're free to do that and make it part of the motion.
Okay, well, I would recommend we do that, so I would uh add that to the motion and and thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, um, I don't have any additional questions, um. And this is a public hearing, this is an environmental impact design review, public hearing, so um if there's anyone. From the public who it has, who has questions or would like to comment, I see that uh Mr. McCusker has raised his hand. But anyone on the phone can press star nine or raise your hand in the um Zoom app. So I will enable Mr. McCusker, I will unmute you now, so you can ask, you can speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, uh, my name is Tom McCusker, I live at thirty-three Brookfield Road in the. Islington section of Westwood. I've been a member of the Norfolk Golf Club since about nineteen eighty-three. Our clubhouse burned down in nineteen eighty-six, I believe. And it was uh not a very successful fire, we were woefully uninsured. And we built uh the existing clubhouse with the insurance proceeds. What's presented to you today uh is a great. Uh improvement upon what we have now, and I want to point out that. The golf club is about forty-five acres of land in Islington, is probably the largest. Open space in Islington, we have always been a public service to the town of Westwood. Sledding in the winter, cross-country skiing in the winter. We have accommodated the Dedham High School and the Westwood High School golf teams, both on practices. And tournament play. And we feel whether we have been very, very responsive to the town of Westwood. We also provide, you know, public space for various town functions in our clubhouse over the years. And as far as accessibility goes, uh, we have always accommodated everybody. And I would like to point out, just today, I played at the golf course today. And I was just behind a foursome which had a fellow. Who was paralyzed from the chest down, he was driving in a special golf cart that would take him to his ball. Stand him up and he could hit the ball and then sit him down and go up and he played the course. And I had the great pleasure, is a fellow named Jerry from Roselandale, where I'm from. I had the great pleasure of sitting down with him uh late this afternoon, having a beer with him. And talking about his experience at the golf club. We are a wonderful asset to the town and what is being presented to you tonight. Will enable us to continue to do that, I urgently urge you to approve the application, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCusker. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? I don't see any further comments, so we have um. As an environmental impact design review, we have uh waivers that have been requested and then we have the actual approval. So we would need two motions. Uh, first, we've just, we've talked a little bit about the waivers, but would someone like to make that motion?
Oh, I have a question, uh, so they, we need some changes in the plans that we've discussed. Uh, so far tonight, so should we approve this now with the condition that those? These plans be brought up to date and as according to the things we said today?
Yeah, can.
Or should we continue this? What would be the best thing to do?
I thought we would take, Mr. Hearn, you can chime in, but I thought we would take Steve's um changes and make that those conditions, so.
You're good, you're completely free to do that and you can make them conditions of the issuance of the building permit if you so choose.
So I think we would, I think, I don't think you make conditions on the waivers, but we can proceed with.
No, but if there's, if there are changes in the plans. You can't make conditions on the waivers, but if there are changes, specific changes Mr. Olunoff wants to see in the plans, he can make those those changes. A condition for the plan submitted for a building permit, if if he chooses to.
I I I believe, I believe the issue is that there's a waiver request for exterior lighting plan and Mr. and. Right, and so we're saying that with the changes that we discussed here tonight. I think it's, we're saying we might, we can grant that waiver, but if we didn't have any of those changes, we might not want to grant the waiver.
Yeah, so I I go ahead, I go ahead and make a motion to grant the waiver for the photometric uh uh plan. And then later, when we make the motion for the uh. So I'll make that motion, knowing that we we'll make a uh as part of the main motion.
So there.
Add more.
So there are four waivers we need, that are requested, uh, traffic presentation model, earthwork calculations and exterior lighting, so do you want to?
Yeah, I further move that we we waive the presentation model, the traffic study, uh, and we don't need the, you know, the. It's really only, oh, and and the landscape plan, so it's really those four things. The the lighting, the model, the study and the landscape plan.
But I hate to be disagreeable, I I thought the plant, the. The issue for the landscape plan was that you want them to submit a pla- a more defined plan. At some point in time later on for review of your choice. Mr. Raffsky, wasn't that your position?
Yes, correct.
Then I would draw, I would draw that part of my motion.
Okay, so we have. Um. So what are the waivers that you are moving that uh, what are, what are we?
The the photometric, photon uh met- metrical lighting plan, the presentation model and the traffic study.
You're waiving those as having, your your purpose is to waive those as conditions of of the approval?
No, no, those are, those, we're waiving those requirements for the application submission.
Right. Okay.
Alright, so we have those three, so Abby, what does this, don't we need to waive the earth? Move calculations also?
Um. You don't always do that, you know, the the um section seven point three asks for earthwork calculations. Um, this was so minor, it's not expected to, um.
Alright.
It's not expected to trigger uh the review.
Okay, so we have motion for Mr. Olunoff to, for those waivers, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Raffsky seconds that motion, are there, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll have a roll call vote on the waivers. Um, so Mr. Delay. You're muted, so I didn't see.
I'm muted. Here I am. Yes.
Yes. Um, Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
Mr. Olenoff?
Yes.
Mr. Raffsky?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. So we grant the waivers. The next step would be the motion to approve the EIDR. With the condition that a final site plan be submitted showing all the utilities. Replacement of any landscaping proposed for removal. And I think, did we want to add anything to that?
We want to add the, uh, that they. Put all the, uh, exterior lighting on the, on the plans. You know, the placement of, of the, uh, the ones that, there are several missing and, and so they should, uh, really show all the exterior lighting on the plans.
And then could I ask a question just for simplicity? Could we submit one plan that shows all of that? I think it would make sense to show. The lighting landscaping, um, um, proposed grades, um, and, um. You know, the whole area, just so that we could do it in one plan, right? So satisfy all the requirements from Beta as well as the requirements by Mr. Olenoff for the exterior lighting.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay. Yeah, I mean, are you, are you just redoing some of the sheets on the plan? Uh.
When we, well, yeah. Um. My thought is, is that we do one plan for the planning board for simplicity, and then what we do for the planning board will reflect, will include that in our submission to the building department. But we'll also update if we have to anything on the electrical plans to reflect the same.
All right, Ms. Mr. Raffsky.
Yeah, but it should be subject to approval of the town planner. Since we're not going to bring it back for our review to the planning board. Unless there is an issue, at which time this town planner will bring it back to the planning board.
Mr. Raski, do you want to formulate that motion then? And I just sort of threw things out there, but. Want to make the motion?
Amend the motion to, to not say just submit a revised plan. That is subject, a revised plan that is approved by the plant, town planner. Or resubmitted to the planning board for review.
Okay. So can I, will, um, Mr., will someone, I didn't actually make a motion. I was just describing what the motion should be.
I think Steve, you made the motion.
So be it.
I'll second it.
All right. Do we have, is it clear that we're moving to approve? This is everyone clear? Okay. Is there any, there's a motion for Mr. Raffsky, seconded by Mr. Olenoff to approve the EIDR. Subject to the conditions that just described and allowing for the town planner to, uh, approve. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for roll call vote, Mr. Delay.
Yeah.
Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
Mr. Olenoff?
Yes.
Mr. Raffsky?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. The EIDR is approved. Thank you very much. And we'll look forward to seeing a more beautiful. Club.
Thank you very much for your time.
If you could just close the public hearing too.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. There's a motion for Mr. Olenoff, seconded by Mr. Gotti to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Um, actually, there's a hand raised. Is that old?
I think that's the old one from Mr. McCusker.
Yes, okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, uh, we'll go with a roll call vote, Mr. Delay to close.
Yes.
Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
Mr. Olenoff?
Yes.
Mr. Raffsky?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. The public hearing is closed. Thank you again. All right. So, and thank you, Mr. Holenoff, Mr. Raffsky for your attendance, participation.
Thank you. All right, I'll, I'll bring Chris back in.
All right, let's see. We have, um. How did, did we drop, did Miss Conan drop off the call or?
Yeah, she let me know she's, um, not feeling well. So we'll be back. We're almost done with the agenda.
I believe the only item left on the agenda is, um. Meeting minutes approval for our last meeting from, from, uh, September eighth. Does anyone have any changes to make to those minutes?
No, I read them and they looked accurate to me.
And they looked, I read them too, and they, they looked good. Um, is there any? Any further discussion or would someone like to make a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the, what was it, August twenty?
September.
September eighth, sorry, the September eighth meeting. As a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Gotti. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion?
Did we lose Bill?
Did, did we lose?
He was not at the, at that meeting.
Oh.
I, I think we lost him on the call.
Let me see, is he in the participants?
If he wasn't at the meeting, it doesn't matter for the vote.
I think I saw him get up and. Close things. He sort of stood up in his seat, so.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, uh, we have a motion. I'm sorry, I forget who, Mr. Gotti, you made the motion to prove minutes, right? And Mr. Path, Path, you seconded. Uh, so vote, uh, Mr. Path?
Yes.
And Mr. Delay, it's not here, um. And Miss Conan, not here, Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that's, uh, three in favor and. So the minutes are adopted. Are there any further items for discussion this evening?
Um, Dave, just the last thing was, um, an update on the working group for the medical uses. Um, you know, I'd like to, um, start appointing a working group, um. You know, so we make sure we don't run afoul of the, any of the, um, open meeting law that I should be appointing, um. The working group as an advisory, um, committee that will work to, um, that I'll meet with. In the fall, um, to review the existing zoning, review some drafts that we've worked on in the past and to come up with proposing. New, um, zoning language that will be proposed to me and that I'll bring forward to the full planning board. Um, you know, I'll start with the two, um, planning board members, Rob and Chris, that expressed interest at your last meeting. Um, and then anyone else that's interested can let me know. Um, we did hear from another resident in town. Um, that was interested in, in being in this working group. So I'll start reach, I can start reaching out after tonight's meeting. To, um, try to find interested members, um, that we'd meet, um, remotely through Zoom. Um, throughout the fall, and then we'll, um, prepare some zoning to come back to the planning board, um, probably in the. Just, uh, January, January timeframe.
Great. Thank you, Abby. So that's, um, how are we, um? How are you going to reach out to people or kind of what's the? Plan for. Finding people besides the.
I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I, I know last time we talked about trying to have some residents that might have areas of expertise. Um, or, or live in, um, kind of in some of these areas that may be in one of the impacted areas or have a business. Um, so I'm just trying to think of some people that I, I may know of, um, residents in town. Um, we had talked about possibly someone in, in the field of, um, public safety, um, last time or in a healthcare profession. Um, and you, someone, anyone with experience in, um, zoning or possibly former FinCom members that maybe have to serve. On this working group. Um, any, any other ideas, um? Of individuals?
I, I think we, between Rob and I and, you know, other planning board members, we can certainly come up with names. We may not get guesses from everyone willing to participate, but that's fine. Um. Uh, I guess a concern is making a working group that's too big that nothing gets done. Um, so I think there's a, a sweet spot number in there, and I, I think Rob and I can work with Abby to try to figure out. What that is, but off the top of my head, somewhere between nine and twelve or, you know, nine, ten, eleven, something like that. Is a number that works well for, for meetings.
I have a point of order, Mr. Chairman. At a previous meeting, I believe you appointed two people to a subcommittee. I, I think if you're not going to go in that direction, you need to rescind those appointments formally.
So if, um, so can you clarify then the, the intention was the two people who were interested should work in a group? Um. That does not include the rest of planning boards, that it's not an open meeting law issue? Um, so if we call that a subcommittee or a working group, um. Are you?
If it's a subcommittee appointed by you, the chairman of the planning board, I think it would be subject to the open meeting law. If it is a staff oriented group, uh, that Miss McCabe pulls together. And she makes the selections on who comes and when, then it would probably not be subject to open meeting law.
Okay. So I think that, um, then I would, since I made the, I would consider it's more of a. It's more of a language thing there. So I would rescind the appointments to the subcommittee. Let's not have the subcommittee because of, um. We don't, uh. Want to have that structure, um, and instead have a working group, um, that's, um. Who's, which the charge is to come back to the planning board here with, um, with some proposal that's, um. Broadly supportable and that, uh, solves the issues that we're trying to solve here. And we have to.
That would be publicly discussed at the planning board.
Right.
In open meeting.
Yeah. So that's, I rescind, I rescind the subcommittee appointments. Um, and do I, do we need to make a formal? Designation then, or just?
No, it's, it's, it's an informal working group. Abby, is that not correct?
Yeah. So I will reach out to people and coordinate in, uh, an advisory working group that would. You know, work with me and advise me on, um, drafting zoning that will then come back to the planning board.
So maybe just to clarify, and I know we're, it's late, but the, um. So the, the reason for not wanting to involve open meeting law and Pat, you want to like, can you highlight some of the problems that it brings up? Um, like, for example, the members of this group would not be able to email each other, right?
Right. So you, depending how large it was, uh, the members, uh, had to be careful in their communication. So you don't have what's called serial open meeting law violation. Uh, say it was a five-member group. Uh, member A talks to member B who talks to member C about an item. That's deliberation outside a public meeting. Uh, and it'd have to be formally posted and to discuss, to discuss things. That might be, you know, you wouldn't, it would be difficult to get an executive session to discuss issues that might be. Somewhat difficult, uh, a working group, um. Uh, made up of mostly staff and, and one or two elected persons is probably not subject to the open meeting law. And, um. But still would, uh, you know, can't close the door, so to speak. But doesn't have to post the meeting, doesn't have to keep minutes and things like that. It's, it's less. Work intense, I guess is the way I'd put it.
Right. So we're trying to avoid the problem. So like I, so the other board members would not be going, couldn't go to these working group, uh, meetings.
And they, and they shouldn't go to the working group meeting either if it constitutes a quorum.
Right.
Right. That's. So it's no different than, I mean, you know, two planning board members could. On their own, get together and come up with a whole bunch of zoning articles, you know, like theoretically, there's no reason why two of the five. Could not work together on something outside of the meetings. Um, but it's just. You're, it's free, if you set up a whole new organization, a whole new group. Then you've, you create the situation where like you say, if there's ten people and, you know, six of them get together and now it's like a problem. Whereas if you're just informally having discussions that it doesn't.
The best, Dave, the best analogy I can give you is sometimes when we recruit certain personnel. Department head levels in the town, the town administrator will form a working group to interview people. When we interviewed for a town administrator, the select board. Formally put together a search committee that was subject to the open meeting law, laws. Significant difference in the approach on how you work both of those. So that, that's, I guess I'm trying to be illustrative of what the difference is for you.
All right. Thanks. Do we, are we clear then? Do we need to do anything else on this?
Appoint good people. Abby.
Okay, yeah.
All right. expanded it. So I don't think Rob and I have to quit.
You do not.
All right. Is there any further? Anything else or would someone like to make a motion? To adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This motion by Mr. Gotti, seconded by Mr. Path. Any discussion? No discussion. Um, Mr. Gotti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Path?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Um, and I believe there's, there are no other board members attending at the moment. So.
Nope.
Three votes, we adjourn.
All right.